13th, 2015, meeting to order. Welcome to Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Hodson. I'm the chairman of the commission. Before we begin, I've asked Ed Weeden to please lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Ron Ripley. Please stand.
Let us pray. Oh heavenly Father, we come before you today, Lord God, just to say thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be in your presence today, Lord God. We ask to look upon this commission and the people who have attended this meeting, Lord, and pray for those who are on the way and those who had a desire to be here but for whatever reason could not be here. Lord, we ask you to touch the hearts and minds of the commissioners today, Lord God, that the choices that they make, Lord, are the right ones for the city and the right one for the community, Lord. Lord, we ask that you go before us to lead us, above us, to support us, beneath us, to lift us, behind us, to protect us. When it's all said and done, we shall give you all the praise, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weeden, for the prayer, and Mr. Ripley for the pledge. Next, I've asked Commissioner Phil Russo to please introduce some members.
Thank you, Mr. Hodson. Seated all the way to my right at the end of the dais is Bill McCauley. Bill is our city attorney. Normally seated next to Bill is Jack Wall. Jack represents the Rose Hall District. Jack is away on reserve duty, and we wish him well, and we...
(inaudible).
Jack is on reserve duty, and we wish him well and thank him for his service to our country. Seated next to Jack is Dr. Karen Beardsley-Kwosny. Dr. Karen is a professor of literature and cultural studies, and she represents the Princeess Anne District. Seated next to Dr. Karen is Dee Oliver. Dee is a funeral director, and she is an at-large member of the commission. Next to Dee is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and development, and he is also an at-large member of the commission. My name is Phil Russo. I'm an attorney. I'm secretary of the commission, and I'm also an at-large member of the planning commission. Our chairman is Jeff Hodson. Jeff is in real estate management, and he represents the Beach District. Seated next to Jeff, on his left, is Bob Thornton. Bob is our vice chairman, and he is in commercial real estate sales, and he also represents the Lynn Haven District. Normally, Jan Rosinski is with us. She represents the Centerville District, and she is a property manager. Next to Jan is Mike Inman. Mike is an attorney. He is an at-large member of the planning commission. Seated next to Mike today is David Weiner. David is in commercial sales, and he represents the Kempsville District. Seated next to David is Ross Brockwell. Ross is a structural engineer, and he represents the Bayside District. And then finally, next to Ross is the director of planning, Jack Whitney. And Jack, if you could introduce your staff members who are present.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Sitting next to me as always and reminding us it's time to plant squash is Ed Weeden. (laughing). Front row from the planning staff, from left to right, Stephen White, Kevin Kemp, Carolyn Smith, and Christine Gaye. Behind them, you see Calvin Jackson, Clay Burnick, and the zoning administrator, Karen Lazly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russo and Mr. Whitney. The next order of business is explanation of the rules we use to run the meetings. I've asked Commissioner Mike Inman to please review these.
Thank you, Chairman Hodson. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It's important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treats each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviation explanation of the rule. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the planning commission agenda. The following describes the order of business for the public hearing. First order of business is consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains those items that the planning commission believes are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to city council. Final decision to approve or disapprove an application rests with the city council. Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been treated fairly.
Thank you, Mr. Inman. The first order of business is address those items to be withdrawn or deferred. Please come forward if you have an item to be withdrawn or deferred.
(mimicking a baby crying).
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, community attorney, representing Ashton Builders, Inc., on item number one, that will be an indefinite deferral. We hope to be back soon, but there's a couple of things we have to get working on.
Thank you.
And the neighbors that we've been in communication with are all aware of the deferral.
Thank you. Does anyone have any objections to this item being deferred? Anyone else have any items to be withdrawn or deferred? Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of application number six, Fun Spot Amusements, 22nd Street, needs a 30-day deferral, please.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any... I'm sorry, is there any objections to this item being deferred? Does anyone else have any items to be withdrawn or deferred? Do I have a motion on the deferred items?
So move.
Motion made by Chairman Ron Ripley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Phil Russo. We're ready to vote.
Vote is up. I vote a nine to zero. The commission has deferred items one and six.
The next items we will address are those to be placed on our consent agenda. The vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. The first matter is agenda item number two. Is there a representative here for that application?
For the director, Bill Harrison. William Smullen, counsel for the applicant. And we agree to the conditions as revised.
Thank you. See any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Oliver to review this for us.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Are we on item two or three?
Two.
Oh, that was a three. Came up so long after.
Item two is the first one. Well... Can I say three?
Just two. We're two.
Well, we jumped.
Sorry, our... (laughing).
Forgive me, I'm sorry. The chairman... I always like to have Billy's support, though, I must tell you. I'm here for item number two, Wheeler Real Estate Investment Trust, or Wheeler Alaskan Road LLC. Thank you for putting us on the consent agenda. All the conditions are acceptable, and I thank you very much.
Sorry for the mix-up.
That's okay.
Is there anyone here that opposed to putting this on the consent agenda? Commissioner Oliver will review this.
Thank you. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow for a seven-slip private non-commercial marina on this B2 community business zone property. A three-story, 28,000-square-foot office building is under construction on the site, and in 2007, the board of zoning appeals granted a variance for this parcel allowing a reduced side yard setback and a deviation to the required screening. The applicant indicates that the intent is to offer the slips for use by the tenants of the building. There is a potential that some will commute to work and dock at the slip. No sale of boats or fuel is proposed with this request. The boats moored on the property will be for private use rather than commercial. In 2002, the redevelopment of the upland portion of this site, consisting of the office building and parking lot, it was reviewed by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, and a variance for encroachment to the resort protection area was granted. A joint permit application is currently under review for the pier slips and the shoreline mark, which consists of a proposed bulkhead with riprap and a 200-foot-long wooden wharf with seven 25-foot-long piers and a sewer pump out facility. There are no commercial components to this marina, and the site is zone B2. The proposed office building can be built as a matter of right. Pending the environmental navigational issues currently under review by the other agencies as part of the joint permit application, the staff recommends approval of this request with the five conditions which are acceptable to the applicant, so therefore, we've placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is item number three. This is an application by Gray Star LLC for a conditional use permit on property on Shore Drive, the western terminus of Ocean Shore Boulevard. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ross Brockwell to review this case.
Thanks, Bob. This is an application regarding the property just east of the Lesnar Bridge, commonly referred to as the Duck Inn property. So this development's been in the works for a long time, and this application really doesn't change what's been proposed. Physically, it's just a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the housing to be designated for seniors and disabled persons. So really, this is a reduced impact, and including in this amendment are improved architectural details and some additional amenities, and also that parking requirements are exceeded. And it kind of fills a gap in the market here by designating this as seniors and disabled housing. And in some ways, as far as land use goes, it's a nice complement to Westminster Canterbury, which is right down the street. There are 16 conditions mostly involving the architecture and the amenities, but also an agreement to provide a path to the city property adjacent to and underneath the bridge. So staff supports this, and we decided it was appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter on the agenda is item number four. This is an application of Rio Lynn Haven LLC for a car wash. The property is located at 1108 Lynn Haven Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Chairman, for the record again, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Rio Lynn Haven LLC, and Mr. Jeff Small, who's come down from Fredericksburg to be with us. All the conditions, the 10 in the write-up plus the 11th one, are all acceptable to my client, and the fence that you're looking at this morning on the east side is not on our front. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Karen, Dr. Karen, to review this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an application for a modification of a conditional use permit to redevelop the site with a new car wash building, vacuum stations, and associated parking and landscaping improvements. The conceptual site plan submitted by the applicant significantly differs from the plan that accompanied the 1998 modification of conditions application. Therefore, a new application is required. The modification of conditions for this car wash facility will enhance the appearance of the site by providing a new building that conforms to the comprehensive plan's design recommendations while also providing a landscaping plan that exceeds the minimum standards in the city's landscaping guidelines. The proposal will preserve natural vegetation in the southeast corner of the site, which will remain as a natural buffer for the London Bridge Creek and Resource Protection Area on the site. This natural buffer will also screen line the use from the multifamily housing immediately across London Bridge Creek. A condition is proposed to ensure any signage installed on the site is consistent with the color scheme of the building and that it is high-quality and is not destructive. The proposed use and plans are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's land use policies for the suburban area, which seeks to reinforce commercial uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. With the conditions listed in the staff report, staff recommends approval of this requested modification with the addition of condition 11, which we've discussed, and the planning commission places it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is item number five. This is an application of Cavalier Ventures LLC for a conditional use permit on property located at 4200 Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, for the record, Rob Beeman, Virginia Beach attorney, here today on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to read the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Inman to review this case.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a craft distillery at the historic Cavalier Hotel. The hotel is undergoing extensive renovations, as most of us know, and the distillery will operate in a space adjacent to the refurbished Hunt Room Restaurant on the lowest level. Since the site is located in the OR Oceanfront Resort District, and the applicant wishes to sell spirits produced at its distillery for off-premises consumption as well, a conditional use permit is required. The applicant is only planning to produce bourbon and vodka at this time, and they anticipate acquiring equipment and materials to produce other spirits in the future, including rum and gin. The distillery will be located on two floors within the hotel. The main level of the distillery will be located adjacent to the lobby and will contain 2,680 square feet for spirit processing, offices, dry storage, bottling, and shipping. Public entrance to the distillery will house a 227-square-foot retail space, which will provide bottled spirits and other merchandise for sale. The main level will also host a 446-square-foot tasting room separated from the processing area. The smaller basement level will consist of an 812-square-foot mechanical room and storage area. The distillery anticipates producing 100 barrels in the first year and up to 250 barrels per year at a maximum operating capacity. These production estimates are well under the maximum permitted under the city zoning ordinance. The distillery will be open to the general public and the Cavalier Hotel guests for tours and tastings. Only spirits produced on-site will be served in the tasting room. Hours of operation are consistent with the standards under the ordinance. Hotel guests and members of the general public will park in the hotel parking garage and make use of the valet. The Cavalier Hotel was added to the National Historic Register on May 19, 2014. The valuation on this by the staff is a conditional use permit to construct and operate a craft distillery and tasting room in the historic Cavalier Hotel is consistent with the comprehensive plan's land use policies. This type of use blends well with other uses in the area. I used the word blends, it was excellent there.[1126.02][1126.02](laughing). And staff recommends the request, and the commission has decided to put this on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Inman. The next item on the consent agenda is item number seven. This is an application of Waves Motel for a special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District on property located at 1304 and 1312 Atlantic Avenue. Is there a representative here for this? Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, my name's David Keat. I'm with Clark Necks and Architects, representing the Waves Motel, Inc., for the application for alternative compliance. We're in agreement with the three revised conditions stipulated in the consent agenda items, and glad to hopefully get approval for that.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Russo to review this case. Thank you, Mr. Thornton. The applicant is requesting a special exception to the alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code to allow the development of a mixed-use building that will not meet the building type description as found in the Form Base Code. Section 2.2 of the Form Base Code describes mixed-use building as a building having at least two stories and containing one or more commercial uses on the ground floor and commercial residential hotel or office uses in the upper stories. The proposed building is primarily one story, and where the building only provides one floor of use, the habitable space will be about 15 feet in height. The proposal requires a special exception for alternative compliance for the minimum prescribed requirements for building height and the amount of building facade located within the build-two zone of 14th Street. The site is located on the corner of 14th Street and Atlantic Avenue, and 5,646 square feet of the proposed building will be used as single-story retail. The retail will front on Atlantic Avenue. 1,341 square feet of the space will be outdoor dining along the southeastern corner of the proposed building. The applicant doesn't feel that the market is capable of supporting a second-story commercial uses. Staff feels that the proposal is consistent with the intent of the regulations applicable to the subject street frontage, and that it's physically and functionally integrated with the environment, and that it would advance the goals and objectives of the parking strategy for the district. The commission feels that the proposed development is a major improvement to the existing area. That, and based on the staff's conclusions, we determined to place this matter on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Were there revisions made? Did we have those?
Yes, there...
I didn't hear that.
They didn't get down that... Sorry. There's some... There's something here.
(inaudible).
You got it. Way related. Sorry.
Thank you.
The next item on the consent agenda is item number eight. This is an application of Cardinal Sign Corp. for a special exception for alternative compliance to section 2210 on property located at 233 Independence Boulevard in the Bayside District. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Stan Stallings, owner of Cardinal Sign Corporation. I'm here representing John Georgio, the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you. Are the conditions as set forth acceptable?
Only if the height is at a 10-foot. I have not seen the... I have not seen the information that you're telling me. I know that it has been approved, but I don't know what height it was approved.
Eight-foot is the height.
That is not acceptable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection to this matter being placed on the consent agenda?
Yeah, we'll need to pull this in here.
Do you want... Yeah, then you would... You want to hear this, then. I guess we'll have to do that.
I have to hear it.
Because we're not agreeable to the condition. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move this to the regular agenda. The next item on the consent agenda would be item number nine. This is an ordinance to adopt and incorporate the Green Sea, Blue Way, and Green Way Management Plan into the comp plan. And we've asked Clay Burnick with the city's office to review this.
Mr. Thornton, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Clay Burnick with the planning department staff, and I'll be glad to review the proposed plan with you and for the public. As we briefed during the informal session today, I'm going to give you kind of a streamlined version of this review. The Green Sea, Blue Way, and Green Way plan is a process that is culminating about a two-year effort that we've done with a lot of stakeholders in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and Currituck County. The plan calls for a regional collaboration that would manage the unique natural resources and amenities we have in the southern part of Virginia Beach into Chesapeake and Currituck, and really focus on environmental stewardship, ecotourism, and marketing this area and branding it so that it has more use and protection than currently exists. And to help do that, the plan calls for establishing a new nonprofit partnership that would be the primary focus for implementation on the plan. The plan would really help promote a lot of different things in this area for the three communities, including increasing awareness of the uniqueness of these waterways. The fact that we have these kind of resources in an urban area is pretty in itself unique compared to other parts of the country. We would look at improving water access for the public, increasing recreational opportunities, tourism potential, and then looking also to make sure that in the long term, these are done through a nonprofit arrangement that does not create long-term capital improvement expenditures or staff requirements for the three communities. Greenways and blueways are basically corridors that are either, in the sense of blueways, waterways, or greenways, pathways, or trails that link together a lot of amenities. And these areas are pretty widely accepted in the western part of the United States and are only more recently moving west... or eastward into the eastern U.S. And we have a tremendous opportunity to take advantage of what has been a fairly gradual creation of this area and protection of resources over the last several decades. The proposed plan aligns fully with our current comprehensive plan and other plans that are adopted by reference as part of the comprehensive plan, including the outdoors plan and the bikeways and trails plan. The proposed plan also aligns with similar documents in the city of Chesapeake and Currituck County. The name of the plan was chosen because the initial recommendation for developing this came out of our current comprehensive plan, which called for a management strategy for the North Landing River, but the area of the plan was expanded based on stakeholder input to include Currituck and Chesapeake. So by doing that, we chose a name that has historical basis, going back to the time when the boundary between Virginia and North Carolina were surveyed in colonial times. The area is, in many respects, quite wilderness-focused. It's very inaccessible in many aspects, but it does have some tremendous ecological values and habitat value. And because of this uniqueness, creating access to that is going to require a lot of focused effort in making sure that we do that in areas where we can protect the resource but also give visitors a sense of how unique the area is. The area that was studied for the plan includes the North Landing watershed, which is shown on this slide in the lime-green color, the teal-green color, which is the Northwest River watershed, and then the tan area that includes Tulse Bay and northern Currituck Sound in Currituck County. The area has a rich historical significance as well as ecological significance, and that goes back to pre-colonial times with early use by Native American cultural groups, along with the farming expansion into that area in colonial era, using the waterways as highways, moving on to development of canals in that area, including the Albemarle Chesapeake Canal and the Dismal Swamp Canal, coming of the railroads, and then culminating with the intercoastal waterway, which uses portions of the area now, connecting Hampton Roads to Florida. The plan vision and mission for this area is to conserve and protect and manage open space lands so that we can ensure their protection and use for future generations, look to managing a system of natural resources and amenities, looking at stewardship, protection, and enjoyment of the area, and creating a partnership. Our existing land holdings that are protected in the area encompass... Our existing land holdings that are protected in the area encompass approximately 56,000 acres, and that's a mixture of federal, state, local government, and nonprofits such as Nature Conservancy land holdings. In these areas, there are a lot of unique natural communities and areas for plant and animal species. There is more ecological diversity in this part of Virginia than anywhere east of the Blue Ridge Mountains. And having that in close proximity to an urban area like Hampton Roads, where literally within an hour drive from town center you can be in a place like this, is really unique to find nationally. Just some examples of what those resources are include Atlantic white cedar forests, wind-tide marshes, which include grasses at their northern limit, which are more commonly found in the Everglades, a number of different plant and animal species that are rare in Virginia, as well as rare globally. And here are some photos of those. And that only expands when you start talking about plants. A lot of unique plants in this area. Because the area is at the fringes of suburban and more urban development in Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, as well as Northern Currituck and the Moayak area, it is kind of closed in, and because of that, and the unique resources there, it makes it even more important to try to protect this for the long term because of its significance. You also have influences in the area, including the inner facility traffic area between Oceana and Fentriss, and other activities, including commercial fishing, forestry, and farming. Those activities are compatible with this area, and there's been a lot of effort made during the development of the plan to work with the agricultural community in particular, and the proposals in the plan do not conflict with their uses. We did an analysis called a SWOT analysis, looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in the area. And a number of different things were summarized on these slides. The ones that I would like to point out in particular under strengths are that a lot of that land is already in protected status, that we have an area that's largely undeveloped and affords a lot of ecological biodiversity. Under weaknesses, while we do have all these lands in public ownership, a number of those properties are not contiguous, and providing connections either by water or by trails are really a priority. Making use of an area with non-traditional recreational opportunities so that you can really capitalize on and enjoy the area makes it somewhat unique. In terms of opportunities, some other things that are going on already, the city is engaged in looking at a greenway that will connect the Stumpy Lake, the Back Bay area, and this fits perfectly with that concept. Improving water access and looking at platform camping along the waterways, along with enhancing recreation such as ecotourism, and then pulling together the various groups and the expertise they have that are somewhat siloed separately now because of different groups trying to protect their own individual holdings. The potential to kind of have that work together is really very much an opportunity here. In terms of some of the threats, there is development pressure, as I mentioned before, and how we can make sure that runoff and pollution from those areas does not affect the ecological viability of the area is going to be important. And then, as we do increase recreational use, trying to maintain that balance of preservation versus use so that we don't exceed the carrying capacity of the area to basically love it to death. We don't want to have that happen. The plan is organized around a series of core components, including administration, land protection, promotion, natural resources management, learning, facilities development, management, and plan implementation. And the plan is intended to basically be a blueprint document that this new nonprofit partnership can use to begin to implement the recommendations in the plan. Under administration, the plan proposes that a new nonprofit 501(c)(3) group, similar to maybe Lynn Haven River Now, be established, working with leaders and community members in each of the three communities, and that, once that is firmly established, there would be some mechanisms developed, similar to what we did in Virginia Beach, working with Lynn Haven River Now, some kind of memorandum of agreement between the three communities and this new nonprofit. Under land protection, one of the major emphasis in the plan is looking at a greater use of conservation easements from willing property owners, and there may be some tremendous tax advantages for folks to do that on areas that really can't be utilized for many other things. Promotion and branding of the area is really kind of the major emphasis initially in this effort. The Green Sea area and the components of the resources that are there are not widely known about or understood, even in our local region, more or less in a larger area that might want to use the area for ecotourism. So helping to develop that, we envision seeing this partnership working closely with the convention and visitor folks from each of the three communities to develop a shared strategy. Natural resource management, again, is really already well in place in the area, including things such as fire management of unique natural areas to maintain their diversity, as well as wetlands protection. In the learning area, there is an effort underway already started as a result of working on the plan between the UNC Coastal Studies Institute, based out of Manio, and the Sea Grant Program in Virginia to really focus on developing a shared higher education, college, postgraduate-level work in the area that could focus on ecological sustainability, basically, looking at these resources in light of changes such as sea level rise and recurrent flooding and other issues that are becoming more dominant in the mid-Atlantic. And lastly, up here, under facilities development and management, other places around the country have shown that really having a partnership and a plan in place greatly enhances the potential to go forward and start developing the kind of amenities such as water access points, platform camping areas for canoeing, kayaking, or trails and walkways than maybe a local government trying to do that on their own or another property owner on their own might be able to do. Our next steps will be going forward with some further briefings. Tomorrow evening, we have a briefing with the Council of Civic Organizations. On June 1st, we'll be meeting with the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, and they're looking at endorsement and adoption of the plan sometime in the June timeframe. We would be going, pending your recommendation, to City Council in June for adoption of the plan as part of the comprehensive plan, and then working with the city of Chesapeake in a similar capacity. In the later summer, looking at some kind of a joint signing ceremony involving all three communities, and then starting the work on creating the partnership, including some strategic planning sessions with community leaders, and then working toward having that process fully underway so that we can move forward with the MOA process with each community. And we envision that process probably taking six, eight months, and then probably having an annual progress briefing by the partnership to each community going forward from that. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that anything that ever comes in front of us with your name attached to it is always outstanding.
Well, I appreciate that.
It really is, and this is just another perfect example of that. So thank you to you and your team for all the hard work.
Well, I do want to specifically recognize Calvin Jackson on my staff, who's served as project manager on this. And we've learned a lot about the area from involvement with stakeholders, and if there is one takeaway, that good planning can take time, but it also can really excite and energize a community of people to accomplish something they all would really find some common ground in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I failed to ask if there was any opposition to this being on the consent agenda, so seeing there is none. Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number 10. This is an ordinance to amend a section of the city ordinance with reference to Shore Drive-Corridor Plan. Is there, I have to ask, I'm going to ask it nas, any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? If not, the staff is going to brief us on this. Dr. White's going to tell us about this.
Mr. Thornton, Stephen White with the Planning Department. The amendment you have before you is to the Article 18 of the zoning ordinance to the Shore Drive Overlay District. And this is a request of the Bayfront Advisory Commission. They wanted to see, integrate it into the Legislative Intent Section of Article 17 references to the Shore Drive Corridor Plan and the Shore Drive Design Guidelines, either of which had been part of the intent prior to that. And that may have been because Article 17 was adopted in 1998, and some of those documents came after that adoption. The intent of doing this is to encourage developers to use these documents when they plan and pursue all the developments that they have in mind. Right now, there are many out there who don't know these documents, even exist. There's also some housekeeping involved. For example, the Joint Expeditionary Base is now referenced in this amendment, whereas before it was just a reference to Ford's story. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Next item on the consent agenda, and I'm going to put two together, item number 11 and item number 12. These are requests from the city to amend Sections 111 of the city zoning ordinance as it relates to defining the term "live-work" unit, and to add a new section allowing live-work units in certain districts. Number 12 is an ordinance to amend Sections of the actual Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code to allow live-work units in certain buildings and types and so forth. Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Bill McCauley is going to review this for us.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this ordinance consists of three parts, or the first ordinance does. The first is just a definition of what a live-work unit is. And such a unit is one, a unit in which consists of both living space and workspace, in which the occupant, the person who lives there, carries on some commercial activity which is greater in scope than is allowed under the city zoning ordinance as either a accessory use to a home occupation or with a conditional use permit. Those uses of property for work purposes are extremely limited. The purpose of this ordinance is to expand that capability. The section, Section 209.3, essentially sets forth performance standards which relate to the type of commercial activity which may be allowed in one of these units. The fact that a unit may not be lived in and rented out by the same person, in other words, the living and work activity has to be carried on by the same person. It limits the maximum number of employees. It provides for a maximum allotment of the workspace as a portion of the total floor space of the unit itself. It also limits the size of the entire unit, and it also has certain parking requirements. I should mention that live-work units are all covered in the Uniform Statewide Building Code. This ordinance incorporates the Building Code provisions by reference because the Building Code supersedes all local zoning ordinances. And the third portion of the ordinance permits live-work units in the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code. It is the intention of the staff to bring forward further amendments as other districts in the city's strategic growth areas are the subject of new codes. But for now, live-work units would only be allowed in the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code in either mixed-use buildings, commercial buildings, or detached houses, which are some of the building types that are allowed in the Form-Based Code.
Thank you, Bill. The last item on the consent agenda is item number D2. This is an application of Checkered Flag Store Number Five to modify conditions of a conditional use permit for motor sales. This was originally approved by City Council in 1988. Is there a rep here for this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant, Checkered Flag, property known as 5209 and 5255 Virginia Beach Boulevard. The nine conditions in the staff write-off are totally agreeable and acceptable to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The chair has asked Commissioner Weiner to review this case.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a modification of proffers, a modification of conditions. The subject, 15.42 acre site, is currently developed with a separate BMW and Toyota automobile sales and service facilities. Until 2010, the site consisted of one parcel, with the western portion of the parcel developed with the Toyota automobile sales and service facility and the eastern portion of the BMW facility. In 2010, the site was subdivided into two parcels. In 2014, a modification of proffers and a modification of conditions were approved for the Toyota portion of the site in the purpose of expanding the service area and the building and adding a car wash. The 2014 modification, however, only applied to the Toyota lot, leaving the BMW lot still subject to the prior proffers and conditions. The applicant now proposes to construct, in addition to the front of the BMW sales and service building, do so requires modification to the proffers that remain for the portion of the site. Furthermore, the condition of the use permit approved in October of 2006 still apply to the BMW lot, and they are being modified as well. The comprehensive plan states that this is located in the western campus district area of the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. Staff has recommended approval when we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiner. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the items that are on the consent agenda. I would like to move that items number two, three, four, five, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, and item D2 be approved.
Sir, a second. A second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I have clarification on item seven, the addition that was added to? Because I didn't see this until it just came up, the additional language on the parapet wall. I'd just like to make sure that that, whatever the material, the architect shows, is presented to the planning director prior to City Council for his approval. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, motion made by Vice Chair Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Enman. We are now ready to vote.
I need to abstain from voting on item number three, as I have a business relationship with the owner.
And I need to abstain on item five.
Three is graceful.
And eight. I serve on the Town Bank Advisory Board in the city of Chesapeake.
Eight has been pulled. We're going to hear eight.
Okay.
Eight's coming up.
No, no, I can't even talk about it.
All right, motion made by Vice Chairman Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Enman. With an abstention by Mr. Enman on Agenda Item Three, and abstention by Commissioner Ripley on Agenda Item Number Five.
And eight when we go.
Eight when we hear it.
We're ready to vote.
Votes up. Out of nine to zero, the commission has approved items two, three, four, five, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, and D2, with the abstention in order to item three and item five.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the applicants who had a matter on the consent agenda for attending today's hearing. These items will now be scheduled for hearing on the City Council agenda. We will now address the remaining matters on our agenda, and I'll ask the secretary to please call the first item.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Eight, an application of Cardinal Sign Corp. for a special exception for alternative compliance to Section 2210(a)(6) on property located at 233 Independence Boulevard, District Four, Bayside.
Good afternoon.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have asked.
Please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Stan Stallings. I'm the owner of Cardinal Sign Corporation in Virginia Beach. I'm here representing Mr. John Georgio, the owner of the property in the small center that's there. In January of this year, a nevied driver destroyed the existing freestanding sign that was on the corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard. that was on the corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard and Independence. Somehow, he missed everything there and hit the sign and went on through. So we have drawn a new sign to replace this one. We had checked with the City Zoning, Mr. Kevin Hirschberger, who is our representative, who we contacted about it. We were told that we could replace the sign. The sign was designed with a ten-foot overall height, with the sign itself being one hundred inches to the top of the copy area. This would replace it, give him what he had there and what he has in agreement in leases with his existing tenants that are there. So that is my reason for asking for the ten-foot. Also, when we were told that it could be replaced, we started the permit process, sent it down. We also started the fabrication, unfortunately. So I have a sign that's ready. We didn't know all this, but the city was not aware also that it had to come here when we had checked with them in this new overlay district that's there. So we were caught on this one. So I'm asking for the ten-foot with the overall height of the copy area being one hundred inches or eight foot eight.
Any questions for Mr. Stallings?
I got a question.
Mr. Weiner.
After you started the process of the permit, were you supposed to wait for the permit before you'd made the sign?
Typically, we do. Yes, we do. But with the go-ahead from the city, we felt we didn't have any issues. I would not have started without getting a clearance.
So the first sign that you made was ten-foot?
Yes. The sign that was existing on the property is ten, and the new one is ten to replace it.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was just going to ask.
Mr. Brockwell.
Just for clarity, so your objections to this condition are that because of the verbal understanding you had and then because you've already fabricated it?
That was correct.
So is it possible for you to modify what you fabricated to install it?
I can, yes. I can adapt that additional caution.
Yeah, I think that was the bit, the point of our, the condition in there was for...
May I ask then, if you are leaning in that direction to the eight-foot height, would you consider the height of the copy or the top of the sign?
What was the question?
There's two heights here. We have the height of the copy where you see the name of the shopping center, and then you have the decorative piece that sits on top of it that doesn't advertise anything, it's just a decorative piece. I'm asking if you're going to limit me to the eight-foot height, that it be considered at the top of the name of the shopping center rather than the decorative piece on top?
Personally, I don't see a problem with whatever, as long as it gets down to eight feet, whatever easiest for him to make it eight foot.
But his request, I think, is to actually be more than eight feet.
He wants to not count the decorative piece on top.
Stop the eight feet at the top of the word "town center."
The decorative piece, that's correct. I mean, excuse me.
Use the pointer, if you could use the pointer.
There's a red laser light. What is that? What would the height of that be? Is that the eight foot eight? Is it close to eight foot?
Push the button on it, there you go.
Okay, I'm going to push the button.
There you go.
That area right there across the top of that currently is eight foot eight. I could lower the base, I could take eight inches off the base to make that ninety-six inches or eight foot, leaving me a sixteen-inch decorative piece on top of it.
You're still almost ten feet total.
Nine foot six.
Nine six, yeah.
Yes. I'm asking just for clarification, that if I could do the eight foot, just for that.
I think I'll speak for Kevin, but I believe the eight foot is to the actual top, even of the decorative piece of the sign. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And I'll think, Jeff, if I can add, you know, we were talking about the intent of the design guidelines referencing the ordinance and consistency and possible precedent being set. It's not a frivolous thing that we're getting at here, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I understand that. It's a little different than having a drunk driver take your sign out from your head.
Right, I understand that, too.
Any other questions for Mr. Stallings? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do we have any other speakers?
No. Mr. Chairman, there are no other speakers.
All right, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the commission. Anybody like to start?
I'll start, Jeff.
Mr. Brockwell.
Just to follow up on what I was just saying and what we discussed in the informals, you know, this, a lot of thought and effort went into the guidelines that are supposed to be used in the Central Business Core District, and obviously, it's an important planning and zoning area, development area for the city. So it's important to us to stay consistent and to make sure that no precedents are set so that these guidelines get looser. The idea that we discussed was that it was important to kind of stick to what's been established and vetted, so that's the reason we were insistent upon sticking to the guidelines and asking that he stay to the eight feet that's specified.
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, my thoughts are sort of on two points. Number one, I think I'm trusting that they operated in good faith, and somebody at the city did tell them that they could put back what had been knocked over and that they've gone ahead and fabricated it. I also think that in show of good faith, that he's willing to knock off some height on the sign. So my inclination would be if this body thinks so, to let him make it, you know, drop it down eight inches so that they don't have to completely rebuild it. And at the end of the day, I don't know that that's going to ruin the sign details of the town center area, but it would certainly, you know, work with the applicant here and not cost them a whole lot of extra money.
I guess my question real quick, Mr. Enman, is if you're going to take eight inches off the bottom, can you just not take twenty-four inches off? I mean, he's going to have to cut something off regardless, and to move it up a few more inches, I don't know that that's going to be that much more effort to do. But again, I don't know the production on how the sign is made, but, sorry, Mr. Enman.
I was going to ask, I don't really understand Mr. Thornton's suggestion.
Well, he, the applicant suggested that if we take the top of the red, the burgundy, and let that be the eight foot, and it would have, the sign would have to come down about eight or nine inches. The total sign would be about nine foot six inches or nine foot four inches, whatever.
I understood him to say he only wanted us to count to the top of the town center, not take it off.
Well, no, that would be where the eight foot would go. He'd make it no taller than eight feet at the top, or eight feet eight at the top of the town center. Yeah, that's where he wanted to do the measurement as opposed to the top of the sign.
Okay, so you understand he's not going to modify the sign?
Well, he's going to drop the sign down substantially, I think, maybe ten inches or so, unless I misunderstood him.
Could you come back up for one second, just to make sure we get this clear? Please state your name again, just for...
Stan Stallings with Cardinal Signs. And Jim is correct, we would be lowering the portion to secure that the top of the area right above the town center point would be at the ninety-six inches, eight-foot height. I'm just asking that you leave the decorative piece on top of it.
So you will be taking a...
Portion of the bottom.
Of the bottom off.
That's correct. Wherever I have to get it, I'll get it out of there somewhere.
Well, my question to you is, if you're going to have to cut off six or eight inches, whatever the amount is, is it that much harder to cut twenty-four inches off?
No, it's not, sir. But while also putting, because of the existing landscape and stuff, I think we're putting the sign too close to the ground for a regional center, excuse me, for a small center like that.
Okay. Any other questions while Mr. Stallings is up here? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Russo.
I feel sorry for the landlord. It wasn't his fault. Apparently, some drunk driver came and hit the sign. But, you know, we are just talking about a sign, and it's like the speaker stated, it seemed to be an issue of cost. And, you know, I don't know how expensive this sign is, but when you compare it to the, you know, what we're trying to accomplish in Town Point Center, you know, we really have to adhere to standards. And, yeah, it's going to be extra cost to cut it down two feet, but again, we're just talking about a sign. So, and again, I feel sorry for the landlord, but we've got Vitamin Shoppe, T-Mobile, Starbucks. Those costs are probably going to be spread over some tenants who have some pretty heavy buying power there. So it seems, again, it seems like we're talking about an issue of cost, and when I weigh the issue of a cost of taking two feet off of a sign versus what we're trying to accomplish in Town Center, you know, I'm going with what we want to accomplish in Town Center. I'd suggest that we keep the conditions, the condition as stated, and keep the maximum height at eight feet.
You making a motion?
Yes, moving to accept the application as conditioned, as currently conditioned.
Well, if I may, Jeff, I think procedurally, I don't know if we can do that. I mean, I think procedurally, can we give him an opportunity to accept the conditions that we put forth, or do we vote to deny the application because he won't accept the conditions?
Mr. Chairman, can I address that?
Yes, sir.
If denying this application does not mean he can put an eight-foot sign up, it means he cannot put any sign up.
Right.
So you can do that if you wish. However, you can impose conditions without the consent of the applicant, so you can also make a motion simply to, as you have, to approve the application on the condition that the sign is no higher than eight feet in total. That would allow the eight-foot sign to be constructed rather than having no sign at all.
If the applicant decides not to build it, that's his choice, if he doesn't want to meet the eight.
Clearly.
So he hasn't...
Same thing we did at Hilltop was that car repair shop.
Right, okay. Thanks, Phil. Anybody like to make a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Brockwell. Ready to vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do need to abstain.
With an abstention from Mr. Ripley on...
Guarding Town Bank as a member of their board in Chesapeake.
I apologize for not bringing it back up yet. So with an abstention noted by Mr. Ripley on this Agenda Item, eight.
Now, this is being proved as is?
Correct.
No, to be clear, it's just to state the condition, which is that the sign be no higher than eight feet high. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
So it's open. Eight-four, zero against, the exceptions, the application of Cardinal Sign Corp. is approved, the sign condition being no more than eight feet.
Thank you. Mr. Russo, please call the next speaker.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the next...
Our next Agenda Item.
The next Agenda Item is Item number thirteen, an application of Paul S. Brown Family LLC for change of zoning from R-20 to I-1 on property that consists of a thirty-foot wide strip that runs parallel to the southeast lot line of GPEN two-four-zero-five-three-three-two-three-nine-four for a distance of approximately eight hundred feet, District Seven, Princess Anne, as well as Agenda Item D-one, which is an application of BT Holdings Three LLC for conditional change of zoning from AG One and AG Two Agricultural to conditional I-One Industrial and conditional use permit Bulk Storage Yard. Property is located on the southeast corner of Harper's Road and Dam Neck Road, District Seven, Princess Anne. Mr. Burdon.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, which is attorney, representing both applications. And I don't anticipate using more than ten minutes of time, but...
You have since these two applications, we will...
Yeah, I got to do a little bit of history here, too. I represent BT Holdings. Barbara Taylor Creach is here. She's the owner of that entity and owns the property upon which the storage facility use permit and conditional rezoning are requested. The Case Thirteen, before Mr. Enman or Mr. Russo pointed out, as an attorney who is representing himself, it's an LLC, my family, maybe I have a fool for a client, I'm not sure, but the history, there's a lot of history. Our family, the Brown family, has owned this parcel and this farm over here and across Dam Neck Road since before there was an NAS Oceana. The Taylor family, Barbara's family, owned their farm and the farm to the west since before there was an Oceana. In fact, a lot of the Oceana was taken from their family to create Oceana. And we are here with opposition today, not to put the burden on NAS Oceana, but in large measure, that's why we're here. Our property is all zoned R-20, and prior to that, it was zoned, I think, R-six from the very first zoning ordinance of the City of Virginia Beach. Oh, wow, Rudy Inlet. From the very first zoning ordinance of the City of Virginia Beach, it's been zoned residential. Back in the late seventies, early eighties, the Department of the Navy acquired some of the development rights over the property that took away any ability to build any residential on any of this property. And they also took development rights over Barbara's property, not in its entirety. They did not take the development rights over this piece of property over here, which is where these folks live, and they're surrounded by property that is all under the Sega Three, Strategic Growth Area, Strategic Economic Growth Area, going to be, over time, developed as industrial types of uses. To their immediate east is the southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt property that will, again, someday be developed as such that it butts the eastern side of the neighborhood. The, when these properties, which I've had the pleasure of representing both applicants, not associated with my client today, although this piece of property that Mr. Oscar Barber acquired and has developed a I-two warehouse facility as well as storage facility, he bought that property from my client and her sister, who owned this property together at the time, and developed this property with a conditional rezoning and a use permit before there, long before there were any houses over here. Separate purchaser acquired this property from a different party and built a storage facility as well, self-storage facility. We, when this was going on, when these were being built, London Bridge Road used to run right through here, and our family, along with Taylor family, went forth and closed this portion of the road when the city was changing the alignment down to where it is today. And as a part of that whole transaction, this piece of property, that was the road frontage, we had an agreement, it's all, you know, recorded easement, that when and if this property develops, it will develop using Castle to Commerce Way and the access from London Bridge Road. As a consequence, when Barbara came to see me about, you know, doing this storage facility for which there is a substantial demand, that she and her son Taylor are going to operate it, their office is right up on Harper's Road, rather than try to build a road out to Dam Neck Road, and knowing that this was eventually going to happen, and this can, our property can only be farmed, it says R-20, but it can't be residential, it can only be farmed, it's in land use valuation, it's been in it since it was first adopted back in the fifties, so it's agricultural, will continue to be agricultural for the time being, but we can't put this road across here for an industrial use unless we rezonate industrial. And that's all that's occurring, and this road, whether this is done up here or not, the storage facility, which certainly meets the comprehensive plan in every way, this road will stay regardless. It's farmed, it's farm road, drainage. Now, I understand when this gentleman was doing, finishing up the last building in here, he had some additional asphalt, and said, can I just put the asphalt and store it here? They went a little bit beyond that and put the road on here, but the reality is, the road, it's a private road, it will be approved for farm use or otherwise. The drainage all goes into this large BMP that the Taylor family owns, so there's no issue with respect to the road, but we do need to rezonate in order for it to serve as the access to the storage yard. And that is why that is a part of, it's a separate application. I discovered that, quite frankly, when we were dealing with an outlet mall, when you can't have a road go across a piece of property that's not zoned the same as the property. So that's the case law, and that's why we have this rezoning for this strip of our property for that access road. So if you have any questions about that part, I think that's kind of simple. I mean, it may not be, but I think it's pretty simple, and it keeps the, you know, again, from having any curb cuts up here on Harper's Road or from using Dam Neck Road, all right? So that's the basis for the simple rezoning for the access road that is there today, and whether all this is approved or not, the road's going to stay there regardless. It's going to be a farm road otherwise. And eventually, it'll, you know, this property will be rezoned somewhere. And eventually, you know, this property will be rezoned somewhere in the future. It's not gonna, it's a strategic growth area, economic growth area where it's been for decades, that's what's gonna happen out here, kind of waiting for the southeastern to get built, and we may be waiting a while longer. The second application for the storage yard is Barbara and her son. Mr. Oscar Barber has nothing to do, no ownership interest whatsoever in the business. It is a fact, though, that there may very well be people who come and stop at his facility and ask for, you know, storage, you know, warehouse store, and he's gonna refer them to Barbara because he doesn't have any room in his facility. But that, we are not here to talk about his facility, which predated the existence of the neighborhood. I will say that Karen Lazly and I met with some of the residents about three years ago, it seems like it was about three years ago, trying to resolve some of the differences, and I think some of the things you all have heard about were things that were taken care of back then. But again, there may be other issues, but that is not what this is about. This is, you know, a use that's probably very much in demand and probably will remain in place for some time, but it certainly isn't a permanent use. We hope there's substantial economic development coming forward in the years to come in this area, and I'm quite certain that there will be. The conditions that have been placed on this were conditions that I submitted to the staff based upon a meeting that was held with the community, and I think they are very thorough. First being the proffer. The proffer only permits, only permits this property, the BT Holdings property, to be used solely for this use without coming back and modifying the proffer. So the I-1 zoning, which is less than the I-2 that Mr. Barber's property has, is not a full I-1, it's simply for this use only. That's the first thing, and that's proffer number two. The conditions, and I hesitate, I'm sorry to do this, but I think it's important that, you know, everyone hear what these conditions are, because I'm not sure what you're gonna hear from the opposition. The first condition is there shall be no access to the storage yard from Dam Neck Road. Access to the site shall be from an ingress egress easement on the adjacent parcel, which I've described to you. Number two, the bulk storage facility shall be used for the storage of licensed and operable motor vehicles, including cars, recreational vehicles, and buses, and boats, on trailers that are licensed and operable, the trailers, that is, including panel trucks that are not permitted to be parked in residential communities. And that last phrase, not permitted, implies to all of those things, not just the panel trucks. That's why there's a demand for this use. No storage of construction equipment shall be allowed at this facility. Number three, no equipment shall be stored other than in fully enclosed steel storage containers, no outside storage, in other words. The storage containers shall be a maximum of six feet in height, eight feet in width, and forty feet in length. No storage containers shall be permitted to be stacked. They must be situated on the ground on any surface material at ground level. That's the surface material being crushed aggregate. Number four, no one shall be permitted to operate a generator anytime on the property. Number five, all outdoor lighting shall be shielded to direct light and glare onto the premises. Said lighting and glare shall be deflected, shaded, and focused away from the adjoining property, and it's not anywhere close to any adjoining property, by the way. Any outdoor lighting fixture shall not be erected any higher than fourteen feet. Number six, no signage shall be permitted along the property line adjacent to Dam Neck Road. Number seven, access to the facility shall be restricted by a gated entry containing keypad. Only people who have permission to be there, have something stored there, can gain access, and access shall be available only, only from 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Nothing after 10:00 or before 6:00 in the morning. Number eight, a row of Leland Cypress trees shall be planted along the southern edge of the forest line located north of the adjacent residential neighborhood Prince George's Estate. And I will come back to that. And number nine, the storage facility shall not be used for any purpose other than the storage of vehicles and goods as identified in condition number two. No person shall be permitted to reside at the facility, and no other repair, retail, or other similar business shall be conducted on the site. The origin of those, some of those, based on the fact that this facility that Mr. Barber has here has a number of businesses located in it, and the folks who live here, who came to this property as it existed, have a lot of complaints about noise and other things, and frankly, I think they were very legitimate originally, they may still be, I don't know. But when Ms. Laz and I met with them, there's no doubt they had legitimate complaints at that point in time, and I'm not here to editorialize about whether they're legitimate now or not. But that's why these conditions say all the things that they say, because these facilities in these areas, first of all, we've got a fifteen-foot earthen berm. This is where the, there's already, you know, a forest here, it's not a real thick forest, that's why we agreed to plant another row of Leland Cypress evergreens, you know, on the south side of that line of trees. This area here will not be utilized any longer. It will, you know, basically grow into a natural area, and the closest house here is over two hundred and fifty, close to three hundred feet from the eight-foot privacy fence that goes around this area of storage, and the closest house here is also two hundred and fifty feet across the field, row of Leland Cypress, the forest, and the eight-foot solid privacy fence before you get to the storage yard. Those are the closest two houses to what will be occurring in these two areas, which is simply the storage, as I've read to you, of those items, and only those items that I've read to you. No businesses operating, no one living, none of the above. So I think that staff's done an excellent job interpreting the comprehensive plan. I don't think there's any doubt about it being consistent with the comprehensive plan, and done everything we can do to fulfill all the requirements of the comprehensive plan. I will add one other thing, and Barbara is here today. She will be, in the months to come, they will be planting probably a double row of evergreens along the boundary, the remaining boundary with this neighborhood, because it's just a matter of time before the rest of this property develops, and to allow that to mature over time before anything happens in this area, I think would be a wise planning to prepare for the future, because that is what the future will bring, and we all know it. Be happy to answer any questions. Sorry to have read those conditions, but I think it's important for people to know exactly what those conditions say, because they are, I think, very thorough.
Any questions for Mr. Bordon? Mr. Mr. Weiner.
Quick question. On the other side of the berm, the fifteen-foot berm, the triangle area that you just said was gonna grow into a natural area, are they gonna, they'll take care of that, they'll keep it cut, they don't plan on farming that area anymore, do they?
That is correct. Rather than starting a hog farm over there, they're gonna let it grow up naturally.
But they're gonna take care of it, or are they gonna grow trees in it? What are they gonna do there? Are they just gonna?
Well, the idea would be to let it grow up, you know, and to create a buffer, rather than just mow grass.
That would probably require some kind of landscape application.
No, ma'am.
Leave it alone.
Oh.
No, ma'am.
Question? Yes, David.
I mean, we actually got out of the van and walked in that, and, I mean, this is not gonna grow. You have to do something to it. You know what I mean? It's just, it's.
Clear field.
It's a clear field.
Correct, but it will grow. The grass, I mean, over time, grasses will grow up, you know, trees will begin to grow up, that's just the natural way things work, and as I've listened to Andy Fine on the Green Ribbon Committee, and many, many times, you know, the city does too much to require cutting of natural areas that if they were left to evolve, and sorry, Clay wasn't here, I guess he had other things to do, that's exactly what will happen. It will eventually reforest. That's what will happen there. I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight.
I know, twenty years.
Correct, but there's already a forest there, and, you know, we're gonna plant another, and there's, again, they've got a fence on the back of their property, and there's two hundred and fifty feet across which is gonna be an area that will return to a more natural state, a already wooded area, which we're gonna supplement with a row of evergreens, that'll be at, you know, a lower level, so you've got the high canopy and the low canopy, trophic layering, and then you've got the eight-foot privacy fence on the opposite side of the trees. So there's no, and you've got houses, you know, where if you're on the second floor looking out your window, you're looking out at an elevation of somewhere in the twenty feet foot range. You're not gonna see anything. You can't see anything over that distance.
Any other questions for Mr. Bordon?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our first speaker in opposition, actually on both applications, is Mike Jared.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. I don't know if I'm going for one application.
Please state your name first.
Mike Jared.
You could just talk.
I'll start with the roadway, why not? Basically, my name's Mike Jared. I'm the HOA president and a resident of Prince George's States. I'm here to represent the HOAIP Prince George's States, and obviously, the R-20 that has not yet developed. Just to finish on what he just said, that land will never grow. There's so many weeds out there, the berm that was created, I'll go off course a little bit, but the berm that was created just grew weeds for the last year and a half. It looked horrible. I sent you guys all pictures of it. I sent them in August, and then I sent them again in November. I want to use this time to clarify what, why, and how we got here. In March of 2014, members of the neighborhood met with Oscar Barber's office. They also met with Oscar Barber. He quoted seeking our support about these two applications that are about to come. After the meeting, they started cutting down the woods and building a berm. They did not have permits. A stop work order was issued. This is separate from the stop order, work order that you heard about earlier today. We, as a community, were astonished. I couldn't believe that they were just cutting a hole in the woods with no regard. We activated, we organized, we had council members at our house. After, I guess, they saw what was happening, they withdrew their application and then deferred indefinitely. So let's get to the ownership piece. Oscar Barber could never get this application passed. We have piles of pictures, we have a community that is non-compatible with the industrial and the residential. So to credit Mr. Bordon's lawyer skills, he has definitely separated the two bulk storage yards. The facts that bring Mr. Oscar Barber back to the table, it's his dirt that he's moving, it's his meeting that he set up with the HOA, and again said, seeking our support. So they built the road on this property. They built it on Easter. Easter Sunday is the day that they built it. When our neighborhood met with the Creaches and Mr. Bordon recently, we asked simple questions about the piece of property that was next to our houses. They couldn't answer any of the questions. We asked simple questions about what would be happening, what would be stored there. They also had a hard time answering a lot of the questions. Back to March of 2014, Oscar Barber had all the answers. Furthermore, we just heard that Eddie's family owned that property next to us, and that we, I'm lost on this one. Sorry. Moving to the other property, I guess. I stand before you to represent my castle, and as the HOA president, I represent the neighborhood as a kingdom. We wear the stop buttons to show our unity and to make sure, plain and simple, that industrial growth does not need to be next to our neighborhood. Our mission today is to effectively influence you to preserve and protect the family-friendly atmosphere of our community from further industrial encouragement and activities that may jeopardize the health, safety, and or welfare of our residents, negatively impact property values, and interfere with out lawful rights as citizens to enjoy the comfortable enjoyment of our residence. We will have a bunch of speakers today behind me. Has your neighborhood ever gotten a pool? I would assume yes. Our neighborhood gets a pool every day. You look outside, and you can hear the beeps, the constant big, large trucks moving. The comprehensive plan, I hear it, I've read it a million times, but I also realize it's being rewritten this year, so maybe, thinking about, maybe something would change in that area. As far as the goodwill of the applicant, hopefully, we've shown that there is no goodwill. I highlighted here that if you don't know, if your neighbor has no respect for the law, then you tend to be weary of their future actions. The I-2 Industrial is to permit light industrial uses, wholesaling storage, I think you guys know all the lingo. It does say by location served by major transportation networks. These are all side roads. We just heard that the, for the first time, that the place that rents them is gonna be on Harper's Road. So they're gonna drive their RVs up to Oscar's place, he's gonna tell them to go next door. They're gonna drive down to Harper's Road and then come back up Harper's Road, and everybody knows Harper's Road. For RVs, wouldn't be the greatest, and they're definitely not transportation networks. Best guess, it says at the end of the industrial light district, to bring places of work closer to residents, at best guess, I would imagine we would have one employee. City code on sound, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The app says six to 10:00. So every morning at 6:00 AM, we'll have to call the police so they can witness the beeping of all the trucks. Even further, heavy equipment is 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So what a forty-foot RV class under. Imagine the beep beep would be a, you know, heavy equipment. Based on my magnificent math skills I learned from the city of Virginia Beach and a little bit of Googling, we're looking at twenty-two hundred, two thousand to twenty-two hundred RVs or storage containers. He already mentioned the key fact, that this could be the gateway to the new intercoastal highway, so they'd be staring right at those RVs that will have no tree protection. Our best argument here is that we are a high-end neighborhood. We are worth about forty million dollars, there's eighty-four homes, and we deserve a high-end neighbor. This should be a high-end storage facility, if it needs to be a storage facility. It does not have a pump station. It should have fifteen-foot fences, because eight-foot is not gonna cover anything. Our second story's twenty-two feet, gonna see everything. RVs shouldn't even be left outside, they will turn yellow. Motion-activated lights, crushed aggregate. I drive to the eastern shore all the time. All I can picture is all the RVs on the side of the road with the crushed aggregate. To me, it should be paved roads, proper drainage, drainage, and possibly a berm on all sides with a fence. And the November to March area, when you're coming down Dam Neck, you're gonna be able to see through the tree line. Those trees are not built for year-round. Losing my voice, but some of the FYI's that I have are public appeal, also not mentioned. Don't wanna say that one. Basically, in closing, we are the opposition. We have to effectively influence you guys, and hopefully, we have with the emails and stuff, and hopefully, with everyone that speaks after me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jared?
I've got a question.
Mr. Ripley.
When you bought your home here, did you realize that the industrial property was next door to you?
I think we realized the existing to the pointer, the big one. I sent you guys pictures. Originally, when we moved in, this was about as far back as they went. Now, existing today, the buildings are all the way back to the fence line. We have pictures from 2010 that I had sent you. It shows them right up at the front, and they kind of, just in the last three years, just ran right up to the fence line. All these are breaking zoning. There's supposed to be a twenty-foot separation there, and they are not. We actually have one that is right up against that fence, and it's been there for the, you know, almost two and a half, three years now.
So there's supposed to be a buffer or something between?
Industrials mandated a twenty-five-foot yard, and I think with some of the residents, you know, they would consider their side part of the yard, because you could reach out and touch some of those.
Yeah, well, that's an enforcement thing that hopefully the city could work with to get you on it. But my question really is, when you bought your home, was it industrial, and did you realize it was industrial?
When we built ours, this one right here, we were told this was industrial, and we actually, our house faces the field this way. You would think that it would sit in the property facing backwards, but it actually sits facing at an angle towards the field. And obviously, they told us this was the crash zone, it can't be developed, all that kind of lingo. You know, that's why your house is facing this field, you're supposed to have open fences so that you can see the field, and that's what we've been living with the last three or four years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brockwell.
You said there were some questions you asked, and that they couldn't answer. Could you tell us what they were?
I actually wasn't at the meeting. I had my wife represent me, but I wrote down basic questions about what we were gonna do with that field next to the house, the little one that we're talking about, that's literally, most of us, our property line goes over the drainage ditch that y'all probably almost stepped in. Our fence line could be extended to the other side of that drainage ditch, but you wouldn't want a drainage ditch near your yard. So they asked just simple questions like that. Was there gonna be someone staffed on the property? Because if they were gonna staff the property, my property line goes about ten feet into the woods there, you can kind of see the wood line, so they would have to put an office or something right at that gate. So we were gonna have someone just standing there, you know, while we're sitting at our pool staring at them.
Anybody else?
Mr. Jared, listen, I'm sorry.
Dr. Quas.
I'm sorry, getting used to that. Sorry about that. My understanding is that that piece of property was once offered to the HOA in some way, as open space?
It was, in that initial meeting with Oscar, I have it written, someone, we had our secretary take notes, and he offered it to the HOA, which they saw at the time that they would have to mow it, they would have to take care of it. have to mow it, they would have to take care of it, and so they declined it at that time. That was a former board that we had.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have one question. You're representing the Civic League. Is there anything that could be modified, I'm curious, on this application that would make it more appealing to your neighborhood, or is it just nothing at all, or is there a compromise?
We would love absolute not, obviously. But then in the end, you, I mean, we understand growth, we understand everything. When I talked about a high end, I do think that we're taking a step backwards by just throwing some crushed aggregate out there and people backing their RVs. And that tree line in the middle is a ditch about 10 feet, 15 feet wide that is part of the stormwater. So if I was going to park my RV, I'd park it right here, and then I would dump it every time I come in because no one's going to be paying attention to it. Crushed aggregate. If it was asphalt, there's some other high-end standards that are up there.
So as a group, have you talked about, is there a compromise? If this was done, we could support this, or is it just nothing at all?
We were absolute opposition last year, and since then, we've had conversation because we know in the end, you may have to compromise. So we didn't get into how many trees or, I don't know. Recently, we had talked about foresting that whole area. That's not going to grow. It's going to be weeds. That's insanity. It's not going to be grass. If it's going to be a buffer, then it needs to be a real buffer.
Okay. Dr. Quan.
I took down a number of the things that you mentioned. I think that you were putting forward as kind of compromise points. So you said not 8-foot fences, 15-foot fences, the access hours are a problem from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I'm just throwing something out there, like 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM or something like that. Having that forested in some way instead of left to go to vegetate on its own, they're providing that line of trees in the area that is on your side of the property inside that vinyl fence that'll be on the other side. That berm's going to be, how high is that berm?
15.
15 feet, right? So there were some points that you put forward and some other things that we've been thinking of, we've talked about and that I spoke with you about when we were talking about it and I've spoken to the staff about. So it seems to me that what you're saying is that while you were in opposition last year, pretty adamant opposition, now you're thinking about some compromises. Is that going too far? Or if we put some of these things down to discuss them with you, we might be able to come to some conclusions that are amenable to you?
I just, you know, as the owner of the property, absolutely not. I disagree with it all. What is the 15-foot berm going to do? It's going to be a sledding playground for kids. Now we're going to have something else to manage or whatever it may be. But as, you know, when you take a step up and become the president of HOA, you have to think for the whole community as a whole, too. So I'm kind of caught on that line in between, and I literally took over a month ago, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jared? Mr. Thornton.
Would your homeowner's group reconsider having that piece so that you all could maintain it or do something with it? I mean, Eddie's right. If it's left alone, two, three, four, five years, there'll be tree seedlings, and 15 years from now, it'll be woods. That's just the way the world works, the earth works. So if, you know, do you all have any interest in keeping it an open field or gardens or?
We've, I discussed with Dr. Quan that, you know, maybe it would be a reforestation. I don't know where the codes lay for that. I don't know where the state could come in. I don't know if we could have a local school on Earth, they go plant all the trees or whatever it may be. I think leaving it is crazy. It's already been left. This season, it hasn't been farmed yet, and it's just weeds, 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 weeds. I don't want to talk about rodents and problems that we have out there with those kind of animals, but that would be kind of crazy, too, just to have tons of weeds just growing back there. It's been farmed for so long that it's, nothing grows the whole winter, and then you start getting the weeds in the spring.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on, actually, application D-1 is Trish Ann Island.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Since we've got kind of tandem items being discussed simultaneously, in terms of speaker's timing, ordinarily, they would get three minutes. But if they're speaking on one item, I would say three. If they're speaking on both items, it's going to be pretty hard to separate the two. We probably ought to allow more time if they need it.
This is our last item, so I'm, okay. Thank you.
My name is Trish Ann Island, and I back up to Barber's self-storage in the corner. But basically, I live between the two, I back up to both Commerce Parks. I think it's the smaller one and then Barber where they butt up to each other. So basically, oh, wait, right here. And that was industrial when we bought. However, I do not think that's a good fit for a residential neighborhood. I feel like zoning can't keep control of Barber's, that why are you going to put another one there that zoning can't keep control of? When we moved in, we thought there would be a buffer of trees on the other side. We've spent thousands to landscape our side with fujas so that we can't finally, can't see the privacy fence, which has inch gaps between it, which our neighbors that don't have any trees planted, you can see right through the Commerce Park. I mean, that is not a privacy fence. I even called the city back then, had the city come out, and they said, nope, it's a privacy fence that fits the standards. So we, you know, we landscaped it ourselves, but there's no landscaping buffer on Barber's side. If you planted arrowa trees on the other side, I think that would make a big difference. But the stuff that goes on there, I mean, zoning just doesn't, they don't take care of the problems that are there. I mean, we hear everything. I mean, there's not a second that goes by. I mean, it takes me five seconds, just this morning, to walk from my garage door to my car door. Every time I walk out there, I hear a noise from the Commerce Park. Today, it was a truck backing up the first time, and the second time, it was somebody pounding. It sounded like a hammer on a piece of wood. And it's every single day that I hear something from back there. We spent $4,000 on a fountain at our pool to drown out some of the sound. I mean, I just feel like zoning is dropping the ball over there and not addressing the issues. There's people living in the Commerce Park, and it's the RVs, which is essentially the same thing that you're looking to put more of there. If you can't control the people living in the RVs in this already-established facility, how are you going to control it in another one? I feel like zoning needs to do something first before they're going to add more of this mess.
Any questions for Ms. Island? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tracy Little.
My name is Tracy Little. I am a resident of PGE. My home is the second property right here, and probably 75 feet of my property is touching that proposed expansion. I'm just going to read what I wrote. "We searched Virginia Beach for a long time for the right home, something within our budget." "When we discovered PGE, we felt as though it was somewhat an upscale neighborhood, given the condition, size, and cost of the homes, as well as the well-maintained yards and common areas. Then in late February 2014, only three months after we purchased the home, we learned that the adjoining facility, Barber's Storage, applied to expand their business to the near, to the rear of the existing warehouses and parking lot, that area that you see. The proposed site for expansion abuts approximately 70 feet of, 75 feet of my property line, and for three of my neighbors, the proposed expansion borders at least 100 feet of their property line. So they are directly affected here, the whole back of their property is affected. The line's engulfing." So the entire cul-de-sac there is going to be engulfed by industrial zoning, which previously had been agricultural. "I feel that permitting industrial-zoned land to be developed adjacent to residential-zoned land is inconsistent with a neighborhood such as ours, for any residential neighborhood for that matter. I have searched Virginia Beach to find any other instances of industrial-zoned property adjacent to residential neighborhoods, but I have not found it anywhere. So you will set a precedent by doing this, if maybe I've missed something." So as far as I can tell, the benefits of the proposed expansion will not serve the residents of this community or the surrounding community, the other neighborhoods. London Bridge traffic is going to be impacted. The potential negative ramifications of allowing this request for rezoning of Ag to industrial is impossible to predict. However, when making your decision, please keep in mind that the residents of PGE will be the ones that will be most impacted by your decision. And I'll leave you with one final thought. If this was being proposed in your backyard, would you just sit back and just let it happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Little? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker in opposition is Mike Hill.
My name's Mike Hill, and thank you for having me here today. I've been a property owner in Prince George since the neighborhood started in 2007, and I was part of the initial meeting. So if y'all have any questions about the initial meetings, I'll be happy to answer those. I didn't prepare a speech today, but I do want to talk about kind of the history of how this thing evolved. I appreciate Eddie separated himself and Ms. Creach from Oscar Barber, but I can assure you that the intention of this whole thing is an expansion of Oscar Barber's storage facility. And that's been a problem ongoing that everybody's mentioned with the zoning and the public intoxication and the racing of cars and everything else that happens around our neighborhood. And this is just further infringement on our neighborhood. And I apologize if our neighborhood should not have been zoned for residential, but we obviously had nothing to do with that. We talked as a neighborhood. We are opposed to the development going back there, but we are not opposed to maybe some sort of a high-end industrial use for that facility. But this low-end garbage park and RVs and boats and Conex boxes, who would want that in their neighborhood? So we would ask the planning commission, it seems like y'all's intention, I mean, if we can't put a 10-foot sign on Virginia Beach Boulevard where there used to be a 10-foot sign, let's not put trash around our neighborhood. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Mr. Weiner.
What do you, what do you consider a high-end storage facility?
I don't know that I consider any storage facility as high-end, but we have a storage facility that gives us no trouble whatsoever. It's more of a jackrabbit-type deal where people go in, they put their stuff in storage, and they leave with it. And I understand that's not boats and RVs, and maybe there's a market for boats and RVs. But as my neighbor just said, find an area of Virginia Beach that has that sort of facility right next to a residential neighborhood. Why are we going to set precedents here? We've already got one, and that's our fault. We bought there, but let's not expand it and make the problem for us. Because there is a lot of illegal activity that goes on there. There are families that live back there. There are, there's, y'all are aware, there's all kinds of stuff that goes on back there that shouldn't go about there. Let's not make the problem worse by expanding.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scarlett Jared.
My name is Scarlett Jared. I was born and raised in Virginia Beach, and I've almost lived there for almost 30 years. My entire family lives here, and there's truly no other place that I would want to live. So just kind of starting out, I'm Scarlett Jared. My husband is Mike Jared. He already pointed our property is right there by that berm that is existing on that map. So our home directly backs up to this application. I'm asking that you please consider stopping industrial growth in our neighborhood. Most of our concerns have already been addressed, or my concerns have already been addressed one way or another, but I'm going to touch base on why this matter is so concerning for my family and I, and why we really don't want a boat and RV park created behind our property. One of the big concerns for us is noise pollution. I have a one-and-a-half-year-old baby girl whose bedroom backs directly up to what this is going to be. She usually sleeps from about 8:00 to 8:00 or even after, luckily, but I'm guessing this will probably change once this property is created, when she backs up to loud beeps and noises coming from a boat and an RV park. One of the other big concerns is safety. We have several safety concerns that have already been intensified from the crimes that have already been committed and the storage units that already exist around our, exist surrounding our neighborhood. One of the most concerning would be the people who live in the units. I have no doubt that this sort of business will go down in the RVs that will be parked behind my home and behind my child's bedroom. The other thing that is important to us is obviously the visual appearance. I mean, our neighborhood is beautiful. This will be an eyesore. It doesn't matter what's created or what the fence is, you know, I know we were talking about compromising, but this is going to be an eyesore for us. I know this because my guest bedroom on my second story already faces an RV and a boat park, and it's not a pretty sight. This project will ensure that our entire upstairs view is completely ruined. I have also no idea why we got a pool two years ago because it's going to be directly facing a junkyard. In closing, we were told in the meeting with the applicant's lawyer that there's a great need for these boats and RVs to get off of the city streets. I understand that, but we also were told that our entire neighborhood will eventually be surrounded by industrial-type properties. This is really a shame, and these boats and RVs may need to get off of our city streets, but they don't need to be parked behind our homes. If this is passed, it will significantly decrease the quality of our lives. We thought we bought our dream home, an amazing neighborhood, but little did we know what nightmare we would soon be facing. That's really all I have, so thank you for your time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Hang on one second. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Benjamin Turley.
Benjamin Turley, thank you for having us. Thanks to my neighbors, they addressed pretty much all their issues. But unfortunately, as was stated, they said, never, never, never will any of these things ever be allowed in this crushed aggregate storage. I don't believe you're allowed to live in an I-2 or an I-1 facility either. Unfortunately, that happens. I understand zoning, they're overwhelmed day-to-day. I'm sure they've got more problems than we care to deal with ourselves. So how are we going to control something even further off the, quote, beaten path when we can't control a environment that is surrounded by neighbors, our neighborhood? We bought our house moving from another neighborhood in Virginia Beach. We didn't want to leave the city. We found this nice neighborhood. It was beautiful. It was open. It was agricultural. No one proposed to us to say, hey, there's going to be an RV storage unit that's going to hold 2,200 RVs that will someday be put in. Traffic coming in and out, noise, pollution, they've all been addressed. So I don't know what else to bring to the table other than, I understand, future, we're going to grow as a city, but as Mike said, let's not grow trash in one of the highest quality neighborhoods that we have in Virginia Beach, surrounded by nature. We want to conserve nature. Let's not throw trash, please. I mean, at the beach here and everywhere else, you're saying high-end materials, high-end materials. Crushed aggregate is not high-end. Asphalt, I guess, would be better. It would keep people from dumping as easy, but still, please, we beg of you not to allow the proposed bulk storage to be installed or manufactured.
Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Turley? Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Actually, we have three more speakers now. Our next speaker is Jennifer Bragan.
I don't know how to pronounce it either. My husband's, yeah. We've been married for 12 years, so Jennifer Burgaw is how I pronounce it. I live in the property. I want to turn. Okay, so I live in this property right here, and my house faces exactly straight back, but about 75 feet of my yard borders this RV area. I oppose the road. First, I'll start there. I oppose the road for a number of reasons. First, it was built on Easter Sunday, so all weekend long, I had to hear heavy construction trucks back there. But there's also a huge dirt pile, well, in this area. It doesn't look very big right now, but it's probably a good 30, almost 40 feet tall. And we built a pool a couple of years ago. We first bought our property back in 2007. We went under contract. And none of, none of any of this was built back then. So we had no idea we were building next to industrial when we bought. So as this started to grow, you know, there is a fence, these RVs parked right up next to the fence, probably a good 30 feet away from my bedroom window. We constantly hear beeping of RVs parking. There's a big boat that's parked next to the fence, and whenever they pull their boat out to clean the engine, it's just big boat noise with engines running for hours. There's a work truck that comes that constantly, like, almost every day, 5 o'clock, beep, 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 and then he's rinsing out with a water pressure all of his paint buckets from the beep, and then he's rinsing out with a water pressure all of his paint buckets from the day, or whatever sort of construction material. And all of that material goes into the ditch, runs into my yard. I have dogs. We built a pool. It's really nice, but when these guys get out and they're cracking open a beer, and they're talking really loud, and they're rinsing their stuff out, it's just the kind of annoying noise you would never expect to be in this, you know, a neighbor to. You would never choose that for yourself. So the road was built, not a problem. They didn't have the permits. They didn't do any sort of erosion control or any of that other stuff. The city responded immediately, of course, after the road was already built, which is why Eddie Bordons, you know, looking to his crystal ball and saying, this is going to happen, it's going to happen, you know, it shouldn't happen. This type of area should not, should not be next to our neighborhood. All of the things that he has inside the proffer, there are rules that pretty much already exist in the current infrastructure that, that the other storage facilities have in place, but they do no good. They're just rules. The bottom line is, in theory, you guys might have a set of rules that make this compatible, you know, and you can look and go, well, yeah, it'll work with the neighborhood, but in, in actuality, it doesn't work. It's not right. You guys should really reconsider everything about what you're doing in this area because it is just, it's not, it's not compatible at all. These are people living in neighborhoods, and what you want to do is make it look like, you know, driving on, what is that road? You know, near Portsmouth where the shipyard is and lots of Conexes are. That's just ridiculous and wrong, so thank you for your time. I know it's a lot of responsibility, but really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Burgaw? Is that right? Is that correct? David.
Um, Burgaw, is that right?
Yeah.
Mr. Kemp, I have a question also that might relate to you. When we took that, our van ride down that road, we saw that mound of dirt, wasn't that going to be the dirt for the berm? Is that correct, or?
I believe that is correct, yes.
No, that's wrong. That dirt has.
That dirt's been there for eight years.
That dirt has been there for eight years. That dirt is continuously what Mr. Barber uses for all of his other development projects. So it, it may be used here. He says, oh, well, the crushed aggregate, it just got here, and we decided to use it for the road, and I had no idea. Maybe that's true, but that dirt pile goes from 25 feet to 40 feet on any given year.
I understand. I'm just letting you know what we, what we're being told.
Yeah, it's not true.
Okay.
True. Anybody? Right there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Jeff Tokager.
Good afternoon. It's Jeff Tokager. Just wanted to take a few minutes to, to address the commission on everything you've heard today. Aside from the statutory inconsistency of this proposal, land use compatibility being completely and absolutely incompatible with a quiet and peaceful enjoyment of our neighborhood, I wanted to ask to just consider the manner in which this has been brought before you, not just this time, but also in 2014, about this time last year when we were facing a similar situation when Oscar Barber was the initial applicant. Mr. Bordon, I almost find it, yes, he's an attorney, but I find it almost insulting to the intelligence of the collective body of this forum that he's trying to disassociate the previous initiative with the one that you're looking at today. Everything that, that was proposed with the initial application to have this done under Oscar Barber is all of a sudden reappearing in the name of Creach. And I just find the, the good faith lacking communication with our, with our neighborhood, the ability to be transparent, to communicate with us, and to bring something to the table that really is in the best interest of, one, the strategic comprehensive plan of Virginia Beach that was framed in 2009, that specifically calls for the aesthetic preservation, the beauty, the preservation of the aesthetic beauty of our neighborhoods, compatibility of land use, and all of the things that, you know, would really do well to serve the citizens of Virginia Beach as opposed to, as opposed to something like this. I, I found his presentation a little bit presumptuous, that eventually, you know, we're going to be surrounded by I-1, I-2. I think that's your job to make that determination. I think that the council members have a, have a part in that, too. So for, for the applicant to state that this is a done deal and we just may as well live with it, I think it's incumbent upon them to come to you and to us with something that's a little bit more suitable for a compatible land use of the surrounding area. Before we even say whether or not we agree with it, I believe we at least should have the opportunity to see something that has a little bit more thought and responsibility put into it before we're standing in front of you all to be on the receiving end of a vote. I don't think that this was very well organized. I don't think it was very well communicated, and I'm asking this commission to really consider whether or not we're at a point where we're ready to adjudicate this type of proposal and make a decision today. I don't have the answer for that, but from my personal standpoint, I don't think that, I don't think that this has been done with much deliberate thought or appreciation for the citizens or the strategic growth of Virginia Beach. Last thing I wanted to say, going back to my first point, is that when this first came out under Oscar Barber, we did a lot of homework into what goes on in that facility back there. You've heard a lot about it today. My number-one priority is keeping my, my family safe.
He puts it on.
Sorry. My number-one priority is keeping my family safe. I'm a father of three, and the things that happened back in that storage center are frightening, to say the least, terrifying. I have a daughter who stands at the bus stop at London Bridge and Royal Walk, which is the entrance to our neighborhood. Right next to that is the facility, which has been substantiated to house convicted sex offenders living inside those facilities. I'm not sure if everybody here has had a chance to see that in the, in the packages that have been emailed back and forth, but there are convicted violent sex offenders living in that facility. Now, you tell me that if Creach, if, if the Creach facility goes through with RVs and boats and other inhabitable, maybe not by definition, but inhabitable structures, vehicular or not, there are going to be people and things happening back there that are very similar to the activities that are occurring in that facility. Okay, so again, I just, I'd like a little bit more, a little bit more homework done, a little bit more consideration and communication with the neighbors and the council before this thing goes forward. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Tokager? Thank you. You may be seen.
Okay. Our last speaker, I think, is Katrina Clay. Clay.
I'm Katrina Clay. This is my daughter Caroline.
Hello.
She'll probably speak if you're not allowed to. The, I have three daughters, and my house is, and my husband told me I'd be emotional, but I'm in a hard time doing this. My house is.
There's a pointer, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Mine is over here, so mine is right after what we're talking about is right here, but I only think approving this and rezoning this is only going to open it up to around the bend. And this is where I live. I live on the field facing this area. And my husband's in the military, and even though I know that he would be able to protect my family from these horrible people, there are, here are three sexual offenders that live over at Commerce Park. And then here is a list of things from larceny, hit-and-run, pornography, pornography, I don't even know how to say that word because I don't like it, but lists of crimes that have been committed over in the area that is already the storage. And I can't, I just, it's very, very difficult for me to think that this would be absolutely in my backyard. And I know that we would, oh, I love that this thing is telling me to relax right now. I need that. So that's all I'm. So that's all I'm saying is I worry about the types of people that these storage units bring. And I just want you to think about that. I know you guys all have children, and I know there's sexual offenders, and I know there's crime everywhere. Just really don't want it in my backyard, and we enjoy it so much out there right now. And it's just, to me, it's just, just sad. So that's all. You were very good.
Hold on one.
Anybody want this?
If you want to pass it around, you. Are there any questions for either Ms. Clay's? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers.
Mr. Bordon.
We'll send a bill for that. Appreciate the folks coming down and speaking. I'm going to jump around a little bit, try to address some of the things. In terms of insulting people's intelligence, Oscar Barber never filed an application for this storage facility and to suggest otherwise is completely false. Now, I'm not disputing the fact that Mr. Barber, without any authorization from Mrs. Creach, may have had a meeting with and conversation with people in the neighborhood, but I filed the application, and it was never any application that Mr. Barber was a party to in any way, shape, manner, or form. The Creach family, the Taylor family, and my family have been here long before, frankly, just about everybody in this room, and I think that the first speaker, Mr. Jared, I think he misspoke. I think he intended to suggest that Mr. Barber doesn't have any respect for the law, but that's not what he said. And I can assure you, I have nothing but the utmost respect for the law, and I'm quite certain, I know that Barbara Creach does. And there's no reason in the world for her to not have respect for the law, and it's been demonstrated by her family over the decades that they have, they've lived here. This property was in the Sega III strategic economic growth area long before these folks bought their houses and built their houses. That's why, if the gentleman thinks I'm being presumptuous, we're here to talk about the comprehensive plan and development that is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's exactly what this is. That's exactly what is adjacent to them, which preceded them, which is the industrial next to the residential. And I can assure you, there are other places where there's industrial next to residential. None of that, none of that is excusing the things that they're speaking of to the extent that they're, you know, demonstrably true. I'm not going to, you know, say whether things are true or not true. I don't know what, I know some of the complaints are probably legit. I think some of them are way over the top. But this particular facility that preceded the neighborhood doesn't have, you're not talking 250 feet of vegetated area between the back of anybody's house, as, as you've heard, they're right next to it. They're also right next to storage below that. And this is nothing like what is here. They have water, they have sewer, they have no restrictions on hours of operation. No one's supposed to be living there, and certainly no sex offenders, but there are businesses that operate out of here, and there are no limitations on when they can operate. That's not a good thing as far as these folks are concerned, and I'm certainly not going to argue with them. This is like no other storage yard that I've ever done or ever seen, including the other one that's next to him, which is, which is basically a indoor storage facility. These are tightly restricted. There is no sewer, there is no water, there is no electricity, other than there will be the lighting, but there's no hookups for anybody to hook up the electricity. No one's going to live here. Zone I-1, and it's limited. This is I-2, and it's not. Okay? The only limit here are the proffers on the buildings, and there are lots of buildings, as you can well see and imagine. So to attempt to equate this to this is completely fallacious, and to attempt to suggest that there are going to be nothing but RVs out here is also false. Most of it will be vehicles of people in the Navy who need to place to store their vehicles when they're deployed, trucks, commercial trucks that, again, can't park in the neighborhoods, boats on trailers can't park in the neighborhoods, and there will likely be some RVs as well. But it's not an RV park. There won't be people living here. And again, restricted access, no restricted access here, restricted access, nothing after 6:00 PM, excuse me, nothing after 10:00 PM and nothing before 6:00 AM. You know, the only time someone's going to come here is to get their truck to go out and, you know, and make their rounds, a tool truck, whatever, you know, whatever business they may operate, that they won't be able to operate out of here because it's nothing more than a storage yard. That's why we have the container restriction in there that's there, was because the concerns that were expressed in the meeting about not wanting to have anybody be able to live in anything, there's no one going to be living in anything. It's just, you know, I, you know, these buildings that are on Mr. Barber's thing, that have water, sewer, the whole nine yards, can be open 24/7 for the, you know, for what they're doing in there, manufacturing and whatever, you know, I know there's activity there, but that's not what this is. It's, it's the antithesis of what, you know, all these attacks that are being levied at, indirectly at my client, and that's, that's an insult. I mean, but I don't, I don't think it was intentional. I understand the emotional nature of some of the people's complaints and concerns, calling it low-end and garbage and junk, a junkyard. Again, maybe they're referring to Mr. Barber's situation, which I don't think is, is that either, but again, not going to argue with the fact that there may be some issues there. But I've done this a long time. It's very clear that this is 100% consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's also very clear that this was, all was wooded before it was farmed, okay? So the suggestion that this will remain as-is if it's left to grow, and I'm, and I'm not here to argue that there aren't other ways to do it. We can, you know, we can put a berm across here. There's lots of things that can be done, but just so it's real clear, the farm didn't come before the woods. The woods were here long before the farm, and if nothing happens here, it will revegetate, and it will be what everything else around here that has not been cleared for farming is, and that's a wooded area. But again, that, just, just a little piece of information. And again, Barber has indicated she will be putting a double row of evergreens along the other side. It has nothing to do with this application, but it is in our comp plan, comp plan, folks. Yeah, I, the law is very clear. These folks out here, including myself, have to have the right to use our property. It's an area that we have for decades said is going to be economic development, and that's the only kind of economic development that's going to come along out here. And that includes our property to the west of Mr. Barber's storage facility. With that, rather than engage in some of the other stuff, if there, we did answer the questions that were asked of us, and all the questions are answered in what you have there, there will not be because we're not putting, we're not putting water and sewer out here. We don't want anybody living out here. We heard that loud and clear. No one, we never intended to have anybody live out here. Mrs. Creach is like, what? And Taylor, her son, and I went to the meeting, you know, and we heard about a lot of this stuff for the summit for the first time, and there's no one going to live here, no one's going to be allowed to live there. I mean, I, that's just a specious argument that they make. And again, I'm not saying people aren't staying in these other buildings. I can't deal with it. That's, that's an enforcement issue, but it's difficult when you have an I-2 with warehouse and manufacturing that don't have the limits of this, all these conditions limit this, and it won't be hard for anybody to enforce those limitations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bordon?
Can I ask a question?
Not this time, sorry.
I have one.
Mr. Thornton.
The road that was built, we've heard, on Easter Sunday, who, who actually did that? How did that come about happening?
I got a phone call saying that they had extra asphalt from, from paving that was occurring over here that they wanted to store on my property. And the answer I gave them is you can store it over there. First I heard about him putting a road over there, well, as a contractor doing work over here, was, you know, I don't know, a week or so later, and I told him, take either, well, first I said, get it out of there, and then I said, well, it doesn't matter because whether this is approved or not, I've got a right to put a road there. The drainage is all, you know, in place, the drainage is all, it, there's no issue. You know, it's a farm road if this isn't approved, like I said earlier. So the permits will be obtained, and there's no, and the same is true, you know, for Barber's property.
I mean, just another question. Did they, did they build it like it was going to be a road, take the topsoil out, put gravel down?
No, what I, what I believe, I don't, I don't believe, I have no idea. I don't, I don't believe that they took, I don't think they took anything out other than the fact it was already a farm road there. In other words, it was already, you know, where tractors would go, you know, up and down the ditch line, which is on the east side of the, of the road.
So essentially, we don't know sitting here today whether that road is capable of carrying any traffic or whatever.
It'll have to be made. It'll have to be made capable in order for, when the site plans are done and the permits are issued, it'll have to be made to be able to do something.
But the theory is it's gonna be the access point to the piece, the piece in the back, if it gets approved, that's how they're gonna get there.
Correct. Or if it's not, it will be the access to our, to our farm. And it'll be the access eventually to development of it at some point in time, but that's not happening anytime in the foreseeable future.
So if we were to not approve the road access, do they have any other way? Does Ms. Creach have any other way? Can she actually go out on Harper's Road on the back? Well, that's not Harper's, that's Dam Neck.
Well, she has access to Harper's Road today.
Right there.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, to Dam Neck Road. I apologize. There is access, this is, you need a bigger picture. They have frontage on Harper's Road, but the, this is the access that exists today on Dam Neck Road.
So that's hers and it belongs to her?
All of this, all of this property, that's what I was speaking of early, of them, you know, going ahead at some point and planting trees along here because this is eventually gonna develop and then the southeastern, you know, expressway runs across this way.
Okay. Well, that, that answers my question. She, there's a, she, she has another way into her property.
Absolutely.
If this road does not get approved to be a part of her development, she's got, she might have to alter her plan slightly. But she's got a curb cut there and a median break.
Yes, absolutely. And it's, and it's a shorter run. It just made more sense to, as city doesn't wanna you, you know, they wanna try to keep traffic off of Dam Neck Road the greatest extent possible.
It was put there for that reason.
And Harper's Road, just to address that for a second, I mean, there's storage facilities and there's a moving company with moving vans down there. You know, the idea that there aren't, you know, vehicles driving up and down Harper's Road is also, in fact, this mission wanted to, staff wanted to have the burrow pit over here use Harper's Road as its access.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Mr. Ripley.
Eddie, what happened to the plan that, I recall a plan that we spent a lot of time on coming off Dam Neck Road? Am I missing, am I thinking of another?
The burrow pit?
No, the one there, a plan that was approved on, on the property you've been pointing to, coming off that...
Across the street?
Not on, on this property here?
Yes.
No, the only plan that's ever been put forth on this property actually included this was Churchill Downs.
Oh, it was on the other side of?
Right. Churchill Downs was gonna go here and that was, you know, way, way back in the day. I skipped that too, but...
So let me ask you a quick...
The burrow pit, this road does go to the burrow pit now.
That was on the other side?
Yes, sir. That's the road right here behind...
You're right. Is that plan proceeding?
Yes, sir. The burrow pit's there.
Okay.
Burrow pit's operating.
The, um... The use, this use with this outside storage, is that some long-term use or something?
No, it's not likely to be long-term, but the, I mean, I think my, my view of reality is until the southeastern or some roadway gets constructed, we're not, we're just not in the, not in the mindset that we're gonna do anything with our property. Now, Barbara, you know, may, may be a little more desirous of moving forward sooner than, than we are. So at some point, this is going to, you know, develop. I wouldn't anticipate it being anytime, you know, in the, in the near future. But that's, that's Mrs. Creach's determination to make, not mine.
So this is really viewed as an interim type use?
That's correct. It was, it's an interim use. It's not, it's not something that's gonna be there permanently. But interim could very well be, you know, a decade or more. There's no doubt about that.
So what's, what's the sequence that happened? We had ACUS, right? We had agriculture land. We have ACUS that came in play. Is the, was the neighborhood built first and then the, or then, okay, hold on.
The, um...
Let me finish. In other words, we had ACUS, the, you're saying that this industrial area was built first, the neighborhood was approved after ACUS was in play?
The, this property is zoned the same as all of our property and been that way since, again, I can't speak for this piece. I'd be willing to bet it was that way from the first comprehensive zoning ordinance, the City of Virginia Beach in '73. May very well, like ours, it dated back to the first zoning ordinance in Princeton County. But this was zoned, as is this and a lot of other land out here zoned, when the Navy came in and took the easements back in the late '70s, early '80s, they stopped. They took the easements over this property and property to the west, all around to the west. But they, they stopped and did not take this property. So it's zoned R-20, always been zoned R-20, and they didn't have easements on it. All right? So then the sisters, when they were together, they sold the properties that are the industrial and those developed. And then the property that's Prince George's was sold and it developed. And the zoning and everything was put in place for the industrial before the residential was ever sold, developed, subdivision, plas, submitted, any of the above. And, and there are, there is fencing and there is landscaping, but it's nothing, nothing compared to what, you know, is being proposed with, with this facility. And this facility, unlike that, has, you know, doesn't have the water, the electric and all the things that, and the ability to operate around the clock, all those things. That are the genesis of a lot of the complaints that you've heard today, whether they be totally accurate or not. That's the genesis of them is the fact it's, it's I-2 and it's a, it's a warehouse facility that, you know, is open-ended in terms of anything that's allowed in I-2 can go in those buildings. There are no buildings on this property that we're proposing. So nowhere for anyone to, to do something that's, you know, untoward because they're out in the, out in the open.
David.
On the, the road that was built, when you can't see it, next to that mound of dirt that we have no idea where it's going, there's access to the existing lot, as we drove over to it. Is that road, is that access gonna be taken away? If you're going down, if you're going down the road towards the, the road that was built, towards the woods?
Correct.
Near that mound of dirt that we don't know where that mound of dirt's going? There's access to the existing lot. You can actually drive into the existing lot. Is that gonna be gone? Would that be gone? So there's no reason to have access to that lot, to the existing storage facility?
Oh, no, no, no. Yes, I'm sorry, the existing. I thought you meant, I thought you meant Barbara's. Yes, there's no, there's absolutely no reason. And that facility has no authority to come across our property. If this, if this is not approved for Barbara Creach, then the road on our property will remain, but it will not connect to anything other than her property if she wants to use it for farm access. But it will not have any access to, to Mr. Barber's facility. There's no, no authority for that whatsoever.
Mr. Brockwell.
You know, a few of the complaints, I think, like you said, are based on their current experience. But one of them is noise. I know you've tried to address some of them, some of the concerns in your proffers and conditions, but did you discuss or consider any condition regarding noise to help alleviate some of the concern that won't have a similar experience to what they're experiencing now?
Well, Mr. Brockwell, the, the nature of the, the use, I'm, I'm more than willing to have a dialogue with anybody about constructive suggestions on what might be able to be accomplished. The, but I think if you put the whole, the whole package, again, the fact that no, no utilities, et cetera, I don't, and it's just limited to these things being stored there, I'm not sure what noise would be generated, A. B, other than a heavily wooded or bermed, which is gonna absorb sound, deflect sound, were there to be any, that doesn't exist adjacent to their properties today. Those are the best inhibitors of noise that I know of. But, I mean, there was a motorcycle gang, and that, not gang, bad word, club that was, was utilizing Mr. Barber's facility before. And that was back when Ms. Lazly and I went up there and they're, they're gone. I mean, I'm being careful to say that some of the things you've heard, I think, are exaggeration, but some of them are based on, you know, on real concerns that are legitimate. And I thought those had gone away, but maybe not. Those won't happen on this piece of property, number one, for any reason. Number two, this piece of property with what's being proposed isn't in close proximity to their houses at all. Not at all. And you're talking about 250 feet with landscaping, fencing, you know, berms. And again, that berm can be brought around the other side. We felt like looking at a berm with grass on it versus a wooded area with additional evergreens to supplement it would be basically what they're looking at now. Bucolic, you know, a berm can be done, berm's probably better for, for noise attenuation. But it's not gonna be the same use. It's not the same use. That's the long and the short of it. It's a, it's a very limited, very hybrid use. And again, I, you can certainly, you know, ask Ms. Lazly from her perspective as to what she thinks is gonna be an enforcement issue with these types of restrictions in place. And frankly, I mean, if there's some other ideas, I'm open, open to hearing them. But I think I've tried to, and Barbara, we've tried to make sure that we've covered every base because, you know, Taylor, her son, and we, she, he was, he was shocked. I'd heard some of it before, to hear some of the things that were alleged and, and again, not, not by using alleged, saying that there's not truth to some of it. And we're not gonna have that on this piece of property. And I, and I frankly think that most of the people at that meeting that night know that, but, but, you know, it's okay. I mean, it's American way. They have every right to come out and say what they, what they feel and what they think. But no one's attempting to insult anybody on our end, simply trying to get some economic, economic expansion and serve a need, and there really is a need for this type of, of a limited facility for, as we proposed it.
Any other questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now close it and open up to discussion amongst the commissioners.
Before you close it?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it possible to ask the, can they put, is there opportunity to meet with him to see if there's any further movement that...
Actually, I'd like to bring up Mr. Jared for that, the representative. And that was kind of my question in the beginning, was there some compromise?
Before you close it, though, if you don't mind.
Please.
Jared, again.
Would it be beneficial to meet with Mr. Burdon again and work through any kind of issues that you think y'all could mitigate? Because see, this, and I realize we're adding additional rezoning to you, so you've, you've got a legitimate concern here. But we see this a lot of times with housing next to incompatible uses. Like if somebody buys a house next to a school and they object to the activity that's going there. That's a milder condition than you have. But it's about mitigation, you know, trying to be, because they're there, okay? And you've got this industrial element next to your neighborhood right now. And I realize you're talking about injecting additional element, but you've got an area also that's, that's impacted by ACUS, which says, "No more residential." So you're not gonna get houses around you. That's not gonna happen. You know, it's gonna be ACUS compatible. And maybe a higher quality, as somebody mentioned, which I would love to see too. So I don't know. My question is, is there any reason for us to defer this and, and meet with them to try to work out anything further on this?
Right. We, I mean, they all showed up for that meeting that they had Creach and Burdon had put together. And they all gave them the email addresses and said they get back to with some of the answers, kinda no response. So some of the dialogues have been dead for a long time. And maybe even considering that piece of property and whatever we can do with that could be an option. I mean, I just, we've already gone through this for a year. You know, how long are we gonna continue to fight it? And that kinda thing is kinda crazy as well.
Right. And everybody took their time to come down here. Everybody, we respect that.
And we did, I don't know if I mentioned, we had city council at our house and all 84 residents showed up. It was amazing. They were all standing there and this was the first year. So I think we can, you know, we can organize as a group pretty well, so.
Would it be beneficial to meet with him again? That's my question.
I'm, I'm willing to give a try, yes, absolutely.
That's kinda what I was getting at. I mean, to me, when you see, you know, it's always great when you just have somebody come down in opposition that they care enough. But when, to me, you have a whole group come down, take off half a day of work to come down and voice their concerns. And frankly, if I lived there, I would, I would have the exact same concerns they have. I think they feel like they've been duped with it, so.
Yeah, and it, the fact that it's some sort of non-residential use is gonna go in there compatible with, with the DOD and that's, that's all, that's a, that's a given, really, at some point in the future. Maybe not right now, maybe some point in the future, I don't know. But it's not gonna be houses.
We've got tons of other ideas for it.
It's about, it's about, it's about.
We'd like a brewery.
Yeah, I'd say. You got one of those.
I watched the people fighting for that. I'm like, "Just move it down the street. Come on down."
But it might be all about how, how the buffers are designed and handled. Maybe those are some things you talk about. I mean, I don't know. That's kinda what you're talking about with this piece of land.
Absolutely.
Jeff, I'd like to add to you...
I don't know if, I don't know if Mr. Don's willing to do that either.
And Karen, I don't wanna volunteer you for anything, but we've had instances in the past that were a lot more about enforcement than land use, and I think this is one of those. So maybe if you can help, we...
Yeah, right.
Kinda describe how they help enforce conditions and proffers. And I think that could go a long way too towards working out a compromise. If you could help explain either now or if you agree to meet later, what they can expect and what they can demand if something does seem to deviate from anything that's agreed upon in the future so they can have some assurance that this won't be a similar experience to what they've had in the past if it's approved.
Yes, I'd like to be involved, yes.
I think that's a great first step, but I still think they're gonna see, need to see action taken too. I mean, it's the first step to get them out there to, to enforce this, but I think they're actually gonna wanna see, okay, follow through.
It sounds like there's some things going on now, or at least recently, that need to be...
You're talking about the violations on the existing? We have not been notified of any violations till they put in the new road and that's the only one. Most of their, I mean, there's just a 30-foot buffer that's required. We can make sure that that's still there with the fence and the landscaping. I've been out there for several years. We were having some problems back then. But it's not like black and white violations. I mean, this, you know, the existing facility is approved for two, two units of RVs can be lived in. There is a, an apartment for the caretaker, you know, in the facility. You can run businesses out of there. You know, it's not black and white, like, you know, there was this motorcycle club and, you know, they, they stored all their stuff there. And, you know, if, if two guys go out to get their motorcycles and they drink a beer together quietly, you know, that's probably not a zoning violation. But they were at one point, you know, every week, maybe 30 of them would come out and set up a tiki bar and, you know, have a party, you know, maybe that's more of it. A lot of it is not black and white. And when I left it, the residents were working pretty well with the, with Oscar Barber and his, his managers to resolve things. And then, so I haven't heard from them till this road came along.
Zoning is actually out there today. When we were sitting in the session earlier and we have pictures of more than two people just living there. And by our understanding, they were allowed to live there during development, but now they're not supposed to be living there. And they're living in the RVs. They have pictures of them at night, last night, with all the lights on, their cars just pulled out, hanging out, having a blast.
Well, that we can check on. And I did ask the inspector to go out today because I had heard, I still haven't seen the, the letters from, that I think all of you got from the, from the neighbors about violations. But so I asked Gary to pull the conditions and go out there and look, but I haven't had a chance to talk to him since then, so. Give you a full report on what we find out there. Be glad to do that.
Mr. Burdon, I mean, the question came up, would you, okay, Mr. Jared, don't go anywhere just yet, but would you entertain a deferral to work with the residents to see if a compromise can be reached?
First of all, let me apologize, Mr. Jared. I don't think you were at the meeting. I, I believed it may be, maybe not the case that we had sent the email with all the conditions, both to the staff and to the email addresses that we got at the meeting. If that didn't happen, then I apologize. But it was, I mean, those, those conditions were, that are in your write-up for the most part, almost entirely, were ones that I drafted after that meeting. If they didn't get sent to the community folks whose emails we got, that's, that's on us. But they, I'm sure that they were forwarded by the staff. My office didn't do that. In terms of meeting, sure. I mean, I have no issue whatsoever with, with discussions with the, with the community that are, that are constructive. I'm not sure, I think we've attempted, I believe, to address every issue that was raised at the meeting. If we failed to do so, you know, more than happy to, to hear what we didn't address. The, the piece of property in between is, you know, we're open to doing anything that they really want. I mean, berm, you know, let it reforest, give it to them, you know, those are all options that are on the table. And it's not up to us to make that decision. We'll do whatever, you know, we, we proposed what we thought made the most sense and didn't put any burdens on them. any burdens on them, but if there's some other way that they want to deal with it, we're more than happy to listen to it and try to accommodate it, and that's why I said what I did about putting buffer on the other side of the community, because eventually it's gonna be needed, and that's, that's not something that Barber has any obligation to do whatsoever, you know, but to do it now and get it out of the way, and frankly, hindsight should have done it here and got it out of the way years ago as well, you know, I believe that's a big plus, and that's, you know, Barbara's not here trying to pick a fight, and unfortunately, she's caught in the middle of a fight with somebody else.
So the answer is, you would be willing to meet?
Correct, but I'm not sure what we're gonna be talking about, that's why I'm, you know, not trying to be, not trying to be negative, more than, but there's gotta be something that we're gonna hope to achieve at a meeting rather than just stating, we don't want it, and it's a junkyard, and, you know, we think that the comp plan says it's an appropriate use, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I guess the question, I'm sorry, Mr. Ed.
I think I'd want to know, you know, if they're having some real issues with the current user of the property next door, I think I would want to know what are the assurances that this is not gonna be operated similarly, and what checks and balances are there, I mean, that would be something I'd be real concerned about, and I think buffers, it looks like you're trying to address the buffers, but maybe that just needs to be explained better, or maybe there's additional things that can be done, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just putting out some things that I heard here today that if I were living there, I'd be concerned about.
More than happy to meet, I think what you heard today, we don't have, unfortunately, the ability to control what has occurred or may be occurring on Mr. Barber's property.
I'm talking about what would be going on your property.
Not to be argumentative, I don't, what was asserted would it go on on this piece of property?
Nothing was asserted, they just, I think, to be assured that it would be managed better, so that you didn't have those issues.
Hey, Ron, Jeff, do you mind if I jump in?
Sure.
Was there insertion that there is bulk material dirt that's being stored there on this property and trucked out, in and out, that that berm is changing height, and that material's being used for fill somewhere? I believe I heard someone say that.
Well, the dirt had been moved, oh, sorry, I don't know if you can hear me, the dirt had been moved over last year from his property to their property, and even as late as last week, they were moving, they were, Oscar was doing some development up at the front, so he decided to come down the road that he's not gonna be on and dump some dirt back there on the berm again, you could see the fresh dirt that had been put there the other day.
And that's happening on this property that's in question, right?
Who's involved? Right, that's the dirt, that's the berm separation.
So Eddie, is that something maybe we can discuss and clear up?
Yeah, we definitely, you telling me there's dirt on my property?
They drove down your property...
Okay.
To drop the dirt on the, where the berm is from the front properties, like when we were talking about not using that road for access, they're using it every day.
We can certainly stop that, but there's no, there's no berm on my property, and there's no dirt on my property, other than the field.
Isn't there a berm on your property? You're putting a berm on your, I mean, am I right, Eddie?
Not my property, no, no, man.
Well, I'm sorry, Barber's, Barber's park, okay, so there's an existing berm that's being built.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it is, it is, he has extra dirt that he has told Barbara that she can use to build the berm with, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's what we're, I'm sorry.
The fool for a client, sorry.
That's what we're talking about, so it's the existing berm that's at the end of his property, on Barber's property, that the dirt is being now moved onto.
Mr. Barber has, has a large pile of dirt, been there apparently a long time, I don't, I have no idea how long, and he's, that dirt is available to Barbara to put the berm up.
Okay.
That's, that is...
Karen, hang on one second, I know David had...
No, that's what I was getting...
Oh, okay, sorry, Ms. Clausen.
I think we're kind of putting you on the spot, Mr. Jared, to come to speak for your whole group here as to whether or not you would be willing to have a meeting to reach a compromise on this issue, correct?
Correct.
Versus asking to some, asking to have it recommended for denial, because I think, when I initially took a look at it, I was thinking that these two, this was related to Mr., to Oscar's property and what was going on there, and if that could be rectified first, you know, we could defer, rectify that, and then address this, but those are two separate issues entirely, as Mr. Bradan has made clear. So what we're dealing with is, your real issue is as to whether or not this is a compatible use of that property, correct? If the rezoning is applicable for a compatible use. And while I understand that the ACUS, I was just taking a look at some of the words that are used, where the ACUS restricts residential development but encourages low-intensity development that is industrial in nature, however, it asks that it still must be compatible with surrounding uses, can't destroy quality of life for residential neighborhoods, and then general planning principles for the suburban area, you know, coupling those with the ACUS, that particular section of it, asks that we preserve neighborhood quality, and I think that's what your real issue is, is a sense that this is not, while it does address some of the ACUS provisions, it doesn't address the compatible use for the surrounding area, your residential neighborhood. For me, therefore, it's not necessarily an issue of compromise, okay? And so, I can't recommend approval of it, in my personal opinion.
Okay. Are there any, is there, do you have another question?
I got a question.
Okay, Mr. Jordan.
There are two issues here, one is to rezone that road so that it, this property can be gotten to, if that were to be turned down, the property can be gotten to from Dam Neck Road, would that change your thinking about the use of the property in the back? I mean, between your houses and what Ms. Creach is planning on doing, there's a lot of space, there are trees, we've been told that there's a lot of buffer, there're gonna be berms, and I'm just, my question to you is, if that road were not built, I know it's built because he stored some asphalt on it, that's very clever wording, it's now an asphalt road that has asphalt stored on it. But if that road were not approved, if for whatever reason, city council and this body said, okay, that's not a good idea, if the thing in the back up against Dam Neck Road would get approved, it seems to me like that's a long way from where you all live, and it's not accessed through essentially Mr. Barber's road and Mr. Barber's property, would that make any difference to your neighborhood?
Minutely, I think it would, I mean, just because of the way that access is across those two back properties, that was mine and Jennifer's, but it's still, you're still dealing with the same things. I was looking into the storage containers, and I don't know if someone just misread those, but I can't find a 40-foot by 6-foot by 8-foot storage facility, container.
Yeah, I've never seen one.
I can't find one, so...
If that's the case, you're not gonna have any storage containers out there.
Awesome.
Because they're 10-foot tall by 8-foot wide by 30, 20, 30, 40, 50 feet long, so I don't know...
But then I started reading that you can store explosive materials in them on an I-2, I-1, and then I started thinking, well, this isn't compatible, I'm right next to a residential, that's crazy, and we know that a lot of projects go on along, you know, that corridor for the military, so there would be forms of explosives or heavy equipment, whatever it may be, in those storage facilities.
Any other questions for Mr. Jared before we... All right, thank you, all right, we're gonna open us up just for the commission now to...
This is a public meeting?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ed.
My observation is that there's a lot of, a lot to be said on both sides of this issue, we've heard it, we've heard a lot of concerns from neighbors, we've heard that this is a piece of property that is in unusual state of zoning, and they, the landowner certainly has a right to the highest and best use of their property, we have compatibility problems, that word has been said about 17 times in the last 20 minutes, so we've heard, both parties are willing to talk further, I'm a fan of people talking out, even if they just a slight chance of finding some common ground that could make this work for both parties, and I think it seems to me that is possible, so I would move to defer the matter for 30 days.
Mr. Russo.
I agree with Mike, I'm, and I'm leaning towards Dr. Karen's position, I tend to, leaning towards denial, but again, what overrides that is Mike's sentiment, it's always best if these matters are resolved at the most grassroots level as possible, so I would second Mike, if that was a motion, I would second Mike's motion for a deferral, so the parties can talk, and the city can get involved, too. It sounds like there are some issues that the city is not aware of, that they need to be brought, made aware of, so we can police this whole area.
Any other discussion before we...
I'd like to say something.
Yes, Mr. Ed.
I'd add on what Mr. Ripley was saying, everybody out there needs to realize that, you know, there's no residential gonna be built in there, something's gonna be built there in the future, you could be back here again another year or something else if this doesn't go through, so you have to keep that in mind, and also, too, it's not that hard to call code enforcement, I'd have that programmed in my phone if I was you for that existing one, okay? Call them, call them, if you call them enough, they're gonna come out there and they're gonna get tired of hearing from you, they're gonna do something, so call them. So in saying that, I would be with Mr. Edman on deferring this also.
Anybody else?
Let me just jump in really quickly, thank you. I'm still learning, so I think I jumped the gun earlier in voicing where I kind of was, how I was leaning, but my concern is that in asking them to come together, it becomes a foregone conclusion that they're going to come to an agreement, and I think that that is always the best that compromise is reached. I think there are some items that we've discussed tonight that they should absolutely talk about, and so deferring it would probably be the best way for them to open up a door to communication and seeing whether or not any of those issues are likely to be resolved, and if not, we come back to it later in that way.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I agree completely with everything that was said, that's kind of why I was hoping there could be some resolution between the two parties on this, and hopefully 30 days is enough time to give everybody a chance to get together, and maybe we'll be right back here at the end of that 30 days, but I think it's at least worth a chance, so I believe we had a motion by Commissioner Edman.
Will we go each one individually?
Yes, that's true, yep, so let me go to the item numbers, I'm sorry, what were they again? It was 13 and D1. So, Mr. Edman, you were making a motion on which agenda item, 13 or D1?
Both.
Or both at the, can we do both at the same time?
Sure.
Okay, 13, okay.
We do both.
So a motion made by Commissioner Edman for a deferral of agenda items D1 and 13, seconded by Commissioner Russo.
Mike and Russo. Do you defer? Should I defer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The vote is open. My vote is 9 to 0, the commission has deferred items 13 and D1 for 30 days.
Thank you. Real quick, while I have a captured audience, on June 6th, the aquarium, the Rudy and the Foundation, and I know Shadow on Civic League in conjunction with the Chesapeake Bay Clean the Day, is going to have a big cleanup at the Alice Creek Boat Ramp from 9 to noon on June 6th, so I would encourage anybody that can to please come out. Is there any other business to discuss? Thank you all for coming down today, meeting adjourned.